Thank you for joining us for our Select Board meeting on September 16th. We have already started the meeting with an executive session, so we've said the pledge. I'd like to, let's see, see if there are any announcements, Paul?
I really don't have any announcements. I'll cover a few things in the Town Manager's Report, but I have nothing else.
Okay. Any, I guess, no resident comments? We don't have anyone here. I have a few things. I did talk to Beverly Hershorn at the Department of Health to ask about the East Nile Equinence Encephalitis virus. We've had some people calling and expressing concern. We are at moderate level, and the state only authorized spraying, or the need to spray, for high level. We're not there. And if time comes, some people were concerned, we're not part of some consortium for spraying, and it's not been recommended to join the consortium yet. But if it did come to that we needed to spray, we already have a contractor in place to be able to do that, but there's no need at this time. In regards to our two projects that we're building, the DPW actually has started pouring the footings. The last completion of the mitigation that was found should be finished by the end of September. And we've also started to pour the foundation over at the new Adult Center. There was a wonderful ceremony at the Fire Department. The Fire and Police got together, and we had a ceremony for 9/11 in memoriance of those who were lost and our first responders. I was also thrilled to see the Fire Department and the Police Department have both been able to get grants. And one for the Fire was that for protective gear, and the Police Department also were able to get automatic citation machines for some of the cars. So I'm, the departments are working very hard to get grants along the way. We do have a public forum on the 25th of September. It will be in this room at 7:00. And the purpose of the forum is to go over the warrant articles, the pending ones that are coming up for November 5th. And you'd be surprised, why are we doing this so early? Well, because there's some very large ones that are coming up that I think people need to ask some questions on and to understand. The two big ones where we have groups to come in is, one is the overages at DPW due to asbestos mitigation we had to do. And we will have our project manager there and also the architects to answer questions on what we found and how we were able to dispose of it and what the costs were. Also, because we did dispose of this, our waiver was, we no longer had the waiver for finishing the capping, so we, that's something, a project that's been sitting out there for many years, and now we are capping our landfill. That is, so we are having tie-in bond come in to explain the capping process and what we're doing down there. There are lots of other, I think 20 articles, so hopefully it won't be too long of a meeting, but it'll be a chance for everyone to get their questions answered or to at least watch it on TV. Again, that's September 25th at 7:00. Any Select Board comments? No? All right. Thank you. We'll go straight into interim Town Manager Report. That's Paul.
Okay. I had sent around a memo earlier today, just a couple of things that have popped up. Chief Dearborn was notified last week that the Town of Long Meadow has been designated as a municipal vulnerability prepare in this community, and this will open us up for applications and for action grants administered by the Environmental Office of Environmental Affairs. The MVB grant, actually that referred to above, has been modified, where we were going to be looking for some matching share money at the, at the Fall Town Meeting. It's been modified slightly that we have to scale back that grant request to the tune of maybe about half of what we were looking for, all dealing with the timing of expenditures. They have certain timetables of expenditures that we would not be able to meet, some of those timetables. So he will be working on that as we move forward over the next couple of months. I think, as Marie alluded to, the Fire Department was awarded 38, 34,800 through the Assistance to Federal Firefighter Grant to replace 12 sets of protective clothing. And the chief also will use that over the last 14 years, we've collected over half a million dollars in these grants from the federal government. The Finance Department is preparing information regarding the official statement that will be used during our October 16, 2019 bond sale. That bond sale will include four authorizations, the biggest one being the Adult Center at $14 million. The LED lighting, $870,000. The landfill closure of Phase 1 is $800,000, and the Morningside Drive culvert of $435,000. The Police Department had received a $12,000 donation for a camera to be installed at the intersection of Long Meadow Street and Maple Road. This will monitor traffic for them, if there's any backups, so on and so forth. Maybe the big one here is milling of Williams Street, which is ongoing now. From Redford down to Dwight, the milling is actually complete. Over the next couple of weeks, they'll be raising up the manhole covers, and final pavement is expected towards the end of the month on that. And the Accounting Office closed the FY 2019 books. Currently getting the information to the Department, to the Department of Revenue for free cash certification, which I'm estimating to be about $1.3 million at this point in time.
Any questions?
A couple of things.
Tom?
Well, just, you know, it's great that the Fire Department got that grant for protective clothing, and the Police Department also. One of the things that they talked about was this, there was a $12,000 contribution for the police to set up a camera at Maple and Long Meadow Streets. And do we know, I know they said it was going to be for just information gathering and seeing what's going on. Would that ever be used to see if people were making little turns? I mean, would it turn into a...
I don't know if it's going to be able to be used for that, because you'd have to have somebody almost on the site to chase them down afterwards.
Oh, no. Like in Springfield, if you go through, they send you the ticket in the mail, yeah.
I don't think that was part of what had been discussed, and I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. The other thing is, they also mentioned in the report, and I want to give some special recognition to Officer Matthew Chaplin, who was the first officer on site at the deadly crash that happened in the south end of town on Route 5. And, you know, that's not an easy thing to do. I mean, I know vehicles were on fire, he had to step in, and so if you see this officer, you know, I think you should thank him for his, his contribution to the town and to those individuals. The, the other thing is, the, I also noticed in our report that the Planning Board, you know, should get a little recognition. You know, they, it's a tough job to be on the Planning Commission, the Planning Board, and there was a lawsuit that was established by the Pride Station at the south end of town, and I was glad to hear that it was finally resolved and dismissed. Now, you know, when you're on a public committee and you're being sued, you know, even though you know you did the right actions at the time, it's nice when it's finally disappeared. So I want to thank people who were on the Planning Board for putting up with that inconvenience, and I'm glad that our, our procedures are such that it was resolved easily. The only other question, it's, it's really nice to read about all the different town departments and keep up on what's going on. And, you know, we don't get anything from the School Department, you know, like a monthly report, and, you know, we don't get anything from the School Committee or anything. And I, you know, it would be nice to know a little bit about what goes on there. I mean, you know, that we would get a, a report for our meetings. I don't know if that's possible. I mean, it's not that I'm trying to cross over and do any business that belongs to the School Board, but just to be informed, as we are with all the other departments. Has there ever been anything like that?
No, I think we've sent documents from our meetings, but we'll, I'll reach out to the Chair and ask him to send us a report maybe once a month of what's happening, even just events in school, too.
Yeah. Yeah, events, you know, different successes that's happened in terms of students' accomplishments, any of that stuff. Because it is nice to know. Okay. Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, there was a comment in there, and we also alluded to it at our last meeting, about agreement to grade the old Maple Road behind Grapevine or the mobile station, whatever it is. And a comment I got from somebody is, how come we can spend money on streets that don't benefit the Long Meadow people and we're not doing enough on our streets? And I was just wondering if we knew that, I, I'm assuming this is pretty nominal cost to do this, and I think we ought to let people know we're not spending big money on the...
Yeah, I think it was maybe a day and a half work that they put out there with the grader, and again, it was for protection of, for the infield residents, but it is our road, and it could have potentially been a liability on our part if it was unpassable to that degree.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. The other thing is, there was a comment in the DPW's report that the infiltr, I and I studied infiltration study was out. I actually asked Mario for a copy and got it. It's got tons and tons of real good stuff on it, but I thought maybe we should have a schedule that to just be review, and we spent, made a big deal about it at the Select Board. We should just have a review of that somewhere here.
Okay. Any other questions? I, I had a comment and a question. One is the, the $12,000 that was contributed to the Department to get the camera. Does the interim Town Manager have to approve, accept that? I thought all grants and monies had to be accepted by the Town Manager.
I believe there is a gift policy that would have to go through there. I can't tell you off the top of my head if the Police Chief brought that to his attention or not.
Okay. If you could just check up on that. And then also, I was disappointed in the MVP, because this summer alone, we had two storms. One was $50,000. The other, the costs were, that was for one, the other was $175, and that, we're not getting reimbursed by the state. And this was a program I was hoping that would help solve or stay ahead of the, these things, so we could deal with our trees or the drainage issues, and now they're cutting back on it. So hopefully, the Governor will change his mind, or Beacon Hill, and start funding that program better. The other thing is, I forgot to mention, October 2nd, the veterans are having a special lunch for POWs. Everyone's invited, but there's a special speaker, and I think September 21st is National POW Day, and, but they'll be celebrating at their next meeting, which will be October 2nd. All right. So let's move on to old business and just do the minutes, and then I wanted to go immediately up so we can go down to what our Town Council's going to speak on. So is there a motion to approve the minutes to the September 3rd?
We will approve the minutes to the September 3rd, 2019 meeting.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Jesse, you want to come and talk to us about two issues?
So I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. I, both of these, both the Colvest Project and the DIF Amendment are projects that I've looked at the documents and have some back and forth with Jay and Paul and opposing council in the sense of the DIF. I haven't been involved with facts on the ground as far as sort of what's taken place. Most of that was handled internally with the town without involving Town Council, which is probably appropriate. So I'm happy to answer questions about the, the documents, the sort of legal issues or what have you about either of those.
Mark, you had some questions on the DIF or concerns?
I, we're going to do the DIF first? Sure. I guess my first que, I'll just read through the, I got four or five I wrote down, was, there's, there's a proposal for, if you will, modifying the original DIF agreement. That's what's before us. My question was, is this a nego, based on a negotiation? Do the developer just kind of present this proposed change to us?
So my understanding, and again, I, Town Council wasn't involved in negotiating the original DIF or the amendment. I believe from speaking with, I think Paul has some, maybe some information on this, but I spoke with Jim Martin, who's council for LMAC as well today, and his version of this, I think there was an estimate of the $2.5 million was what would be expended, and then when everything was done, I think maybe some of that $2.5 million ended up not being needed for the, this project, but was still incurred by the town to do other work.
I think Mario should probably, if I could, I think what happened, that there was a number of extensions that potentially were, were used to enhance town property and extended a little bit beyond the DIF. An example might be the sidewalk over by the Kinda Care.
Exactly.
That, you know, it would have went to the corner along Dwight, but then it was brought up on Williams Street would be a prime example of some of these extras. I don't know if Mario has a better detail, but that's just one quick example.
To follow up on that, because I think that's really the crux of it. The bid, when it came in, I believe, was around $2.1 million.
That was the, the bid for the, for the roadwork?
And the two alternates. Alternate number one was one of the sidewalks Paul's talking about on Williams Street on the north side. Alternate number two was a second sidewalk on the south side of Williams Street. They equaled together, all one and two, about $100,000. So I think in the developer's mind, his, you know, nut was about $2 million, not 2-1. And so that's the only real justification. I can tell you that I think he's going on for the number.
But nowhere in the original agreement did it say that this will re renegotiated when the, when the actual cost of the contracts are, are known. Right? And, and, I mean, I got a whole bunch of stuff here, but, but, you know, the, the request, and I'm just going to put it that way, of the, this, this amendment, it says it eliminates paragraphs three and four, which are the need for the contractor to, not the contractor, the developer of the, of the buildings, to post the bond and letters of credit to support the, this DIF payment. So they're asking for relief against that. What I've been also led to believe is, and this is from a quick conversation with Paul Sturzick, that in no way does the, does the contract, does the developer's tax liability be decreased at all by anything we're doing here. Their tax liability is their tax liability, right?
The tax liability overall is the tax li, I mean, it's basically the bond issue that we have outstanding.
But I think people need to understand that when the DIF was negotiated, we as a Select Board, and Mark, you weren't here at the time, but we put into that a requirement that it be transferable to subsequent owners, even if that owner should become a nonprofit, under the theory that, as with Bay State Medical Center is the primary tenant, there was a possibility that somewhere down the road, ownership could transfer to Bay State Medical Center, which might try to, as their nonprofit status, to stop paying us, or not no longer need to pay, pay property taxes. And so from my perspective, signing this proposal does nothing, except potentially allow for the town to lose a half a million dollars down the road if ownership should, should, should change hands. If ownership doesn't change hands, nobody's plus or nobody's minus. It's only if ownership changes hands, and that's why my question to the developer would be, why are they even proposing this unless they intend to make their product more, you know, desirable for transfer to a nonprofit? I urge the Board to just reject this in, in hand. I mean, you know, later tonight, we're going to have a long discussion about our budget and impacts on budget, and the loss, potential loss of losing $500,000 in, in tax revenue if this product, property changed hands would be pretty dramatic.
Tom?
Well, in discussing this issue, I think we have to keep in mind a couple of things. One is that if the town, eventually we're going to have to develop that intersection, because it was not running appropriately, right?
Absolutely. The town's going to have to spend some money to upgrade.
It was always on our list of things to do. And when we did it, this is the way we would have done it. We would have added those sidewalks, you know. So it isn't like we added anything on that we wouldn't have planned on adding or, or doing, because that's the way we would have done it. If we didn't have this agreement with the contractor, when we got to it, we might have been eligible for state money or federal monies, right? Tip, program, you know. We would have had to wait a while.
Maybe.
But we could have been able to get that, a lot of the funding, like Contra Street was paid for by the, the feds. And they may have paid for this. So in an effort to make it easier for the developer, you know, we, we gave up that option by going ahead with this option. Right? I mean, that's the way I understood it, you know, that we didn't, we couldn't say, well, we'll do it, you know, four years from now when we get funded.
The tip money.
You know. So, I mean, that's another, another part of this discussion.
Just to add something to it, I don't, I don't think the amendment alters, Mark, what you were talking about, the sort of obligation of a nonprofit who takes it afterwards.
But it would alter the amount that that nonprofit would pay by $500,000.
So I think that...
Plus interest.
Plus interest, right.
Right. And so, I mean, the only part of that that might pose a problem is whether or not the town, if, if the money that was spent wasn't actually within the DIF, and they were spending money outside the DIF, then...
Yeah, that's part of, I think, the argument.
Then it may not meet the obligations that the town had to spend 2.5 million within the DIF. This is a new concept for me. I wasn't, none of these questions came to me before, so I'm just sort of thinking about it, but that, that would be the only wrinkle. Also, I spoke with Jim Martin today, who is an attorney for Long Meadow Medical Arts, and he was originally going, he had seen it on the agenda, asked me whether he should come. I said, I was just asked to be here to answer questions. I wouldn't want to discourage you from coming. He was going to come, and then had another meeting that came up. So he, he's not here tonight to answer any of these questions, but he said that he would be available if there was a future meeting, so.
I had two questions. One is, you weren't the attorney involved with this? Your law firm wasn't?
With what?
The DIF. Who negotiated the DIF?
So the DIF, the original DIF and the original, the first part of the amendment were negotiated by Stephen Crane, I believe.
Okay.
And so I believe our office reviewed the original DIF after it had been sort of negotiated.
Okay.
But, but I, I mean, I wasn't, I received the amended DIF agreement sort of in what was purposed to be final.
But you never reviewed the original DIF agreement?
I did not. I mean, I have seen it since then, but I wasn't looking at it at the time.
Oh, okay. And then how much did we take out in the way of bond?
We actually took out the full 2.5 million dollars.
And I don't understand, where did the 2.5 go? If we paid 2.1 for the project, because it was 2 million plus $100,000 for the extra sidewalks, where'd the extra 400 go?
There's other things that were done on the project that is using that money.
What was done?
Drainage, police officers, signals, the bent mast arms that are now our standard, temporary signals. Do you remember there was six months where there was span wire between Dwight Road and Conver Street?
But was there something that was done that didn't have to be done? Because they're saying the value of it was only 2 million, but the value was really 2.4 to get that project done, except for $100,000 extra.
From the developer's perspective, my guess is he'd argue that, yes, we did things that, that didn't need to be done, and maybe wasn't in the DIF boundaries. From a DPW director perspective, absolutely, we should have do, done the things we did.
Had to be, there's no way you would have done the project without...
You don't, you don't pave the road and not fix the drainage.
Okay.
You just don't do that.
All right. So he, his argument is this isn't worth 2.5, what we did.
Right.
So he's trying to bring it down, but, oh, so I have, I guess I have, my concern is, we didn't have an attorney look at the original DIF agreement to see if there's anything else, because he's now asking for a change in this con, this agreement without any consideration.
The original DIF was reviewed by council.
It was.
This wasn't by me, I was not Town Council.
Oh, but it was reviewed by council.
I believe Mike Schneider and our office reviewed that.
Because right now, they're asking for us to pull out a half a million dollars from their liability and obligation, but we're not getting anything in return for that, that concession, right? Is there anything we receive?
I mean, I think the concession, I think the concession would be the reduction in the amount, I mean, the, the original DIF says that, you know, the town will spend 2.5 million dollars on public infrastructure improvements in the district, so...
Which we did.
Right. Well, I mean, I think the question is whether it was within the district or within this pro, or part of the project. That would be, and again, this issue has never been raised to me before, so I'm, I'm just thinking of it right now, but that would be the only thing I can think, is that part of the DIF is obligation on the town to spend X dollars within the district, and this would reduce that number as well. I don't know if that's relevant or not.
So we might reduce it by $100,000, not half a million.
Marie, I, again, I'll go back to my comment that this doesn't change any obligation unless they intend to sell the property to a nonprofit who would reduce the amount of taxes they pay, which would cost the town a half a million dollars a year. I, I, I just don't see us doing anything in it, and unless somebody has a real objection, I'll, I'd like to make a motion that we take no action on, on this proposal, but I'm, before I do that...
Because the other thing is, it's, the sidewalks that they're complaining about are adjacent, they're contiguous. I mean, it just continues to go.
No, I think he's saying up Williams, towards...
Yeah, but it just turns the corner and goes up Golds.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's all attached, you know, and then the other's a parallel, because we do have a complete streets approach to things, and so if it's on one side of the street, it's going to be on the other side of the street. So it isn't like we said, well, we want to add sidewalks, you know, half a mile away.
Yeah.
I mean, this is all connected, you know, and it would all have, connect, you know, to the building that they want people to be able to go to. So, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, and I think, as you see, 2.5, it's really two, it's just really $100,000 is what we're talking about on the sidewalks. So I would say, if no one else wants to put a motion on the floor, we just won't do anything tonight, and if they want to come and explain why they feel...
I did want to put a motion on the floor that we take no action on their, their proposal.
Do you want to do that, or wait to give them a chance to come in and speak?
I, I mean, we got to do what's in best interest of the Town of Long Meadow. You know, if, had the, had the original DIF, and remember, we negotiated it based on Attorney Stephen Crane and not on an outside attorney, which is a facetious way of saying, they had their attorneys and we didn't, and they didn't put in there a phrase that said, the amount will be adjusted based on the actual cost of the, of the project. That was nowhere in that original proposal. And now they're coming back two and a half years later and saying, you know, we want to, we want to cut down our, our obligation to the town, and it's not even our obligation to the town, it's an obligation of a potential nonprofit future owner, because we already said it does not impact at all their taxes in any way, shape, or form. So they can come before us all they want to and argue that, oh, it's doing the right thing. But the, the question that would remain is, if it makes no difference, why are we going through this additional legal, legal hurdle? And if it does make a difference, it'd be to the detriment of the town, we'd be giving up a potential $500,000 a year in revenue with, with nothing in return. And so I see no reason to have them come back in. I, you know, they signed it, they signed the contract, we ought to hold them to it. We're being held to it.
Marie, I just, the other thing is that this was brought in front of our legislative body, right? We voted on this, this is one article, and it was, the legislative body said, that's a good deal, we want to go with that. And so for us to then change it, I, I think we should go with what happened at Town Meeting. You know, I agree with Mark.
So is that a motion, Mark?
Again, I, you know, just...
You have to stand up for Jackie.
I, I move that we take no action on the proposal to amend the DIF agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So, it seems like we're making a decision. I mean, I'm, I'm late to this party, so I'm out and playing, I'll catch up quite a bit on this one. And it might be... And it might be beneficial to have them come in and we can have a discussion as to, you know, what, you know, what are the reasons for, what are the reasons for, for the proposed amendment, the proposed change? And it's very likely nothing would change after that conversation, we'd still make the same motion and vote the same way.
Good point. I mean, what, what might they say that could sway you?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. That's why they want them to come in.
But, but they didn't put that argument in the, in any of the written materials we got, I'm just.
Do you see any concerns with going forward on no action?
I mean, I, I tend to, I tend to think since they're not here, they, they did find out today about this meeting and made an effort to come here. I mean, personally, my inclination would be to allow them to come and make a pitch, but it's obviously entirely up to the select board's discretion on that. And just, I mean.
All right, so your motion's on the floor. There's a second, we've had discussion, all those in favor of no action today? All those opposed? So they live to find another day. So our next meeting is October, what is it, October?
Seventh.
Seventh? Okay, yeah. Now, we can talk about coal vest.
Well, wait a second. There's another proposal by, by this group for a quick claim deed and a, and an easement on the sidewalk. That's a totally separate proposal from this group, from the revision to the.
My understanding is that's all part of the revision to the diff amendment, or to the amendment to the diff.
It's not the way, it's a whole, totally separate document.
Well, let's let them come and talk about it on the seventh, unless you have, so you don't have to come back in seven.
It was always presented to me as one package. I don't know if there's an incentive for the town to, I mean, maybe that's the, the tip for tat there on the reduction, I don't know, but that was, it was always presented to me to look at those as one package.
And describe for everybody what the second part of it is.
There's an easement, a sidewalk easement given to the town, which allows the town public access to the pedestrian sidewalk that's on the private property. And then there's, there's a certain parcel, I don't even have the plans for it, but there's some amount of land that's also being basically given to the town.
Yeah, can I ask, we didn't get any of the drawings or sketches either, and as I read through this, the first thing I said is, where is this and how much area is involved and what does it all mean? So if they're going to do this, Murray, and bring it in, we need to understand, make, because it said, it referred to as Exhibit A, and we didn't get Exhibit A. There's neither description or map of the easement area, and, you know, we need to understand what that is.
Mario, do you know what piece they're talking about?
I'm not clear on where the easement area is either.
So I guess we'll want more information than, and if they give that to us, the easements, it's not, you said two things. She says they were going to give us an easement and also they were going to give us a piece of property.
There's a, there's a deed, again, for a parcel that's unidentified, other than by reference to a plan that I don't have.
Okay.
Well, ours says, as recorded in Hampton County Register of Deeds Plans Blank, Page Blank, I mean, it literally, it's, it's a blank form with nothing in there, so.
So we'll, we'll want to find that out on the seventh, Paul, if you could make sure they bring that in and understanding why this is being given to us. And of course, I know easements are a big problem with you, so if there's anything else about that property.
They're giving us the land to clear their sidewalk? It's not really fair to the rest of the folks along Meadow, so be careful what they're.
Okay, there we go.
That's exactly what it is, is we're giving you a sidewalk, now you have to take care of it, and nowhere does it say.
What I'm afraid of.
Right.
I thought they were maintaining.
I think they, they retain responsibility to maintain the sidewalk under the easement.
It says, the grantor shall be responsible for snow removal. It does say that in the document, but.
Then where we have to replace it?
But it doesn't say, or repairs and betterments, which is the part I would add.
No, I mean, with the easement generally, it's just the right to use it, so you don't have an obligation to maintain it or repair it. That would still be on the property owner, but it, it, there may be other complicated factors there as well.
Now, I know they're building a second building now over there, and they were talking about changing the drainage plans, and you.
Well, they did, the planning board approved that.
You're satisfied with that, yeah. But are you satisfied with all of the drainage issues?
Yes, I think before the town engineer left, he reviewed it and it looked like it was going to work, so we were satisfied.
Okay. And that would actually accelerate their, isn't the 2.5 based on the whole property? So that would accelerate their payment off?
No, this, this is, their second piece of property is separate.
So it wouldn't decrease their liability every year?
It, it, again, it's completely separate.
Okay. All right, so we'll finish this on the seventh. Any other questions on that, or we can move on to coal vest?
Might be part of that, too.
Yeah, don't leave yet.
Yeah, don't leave.
I think I'm here for a while.
So again, I don't know if you have specific questions. You know, I had raised a couple of different issues in a conversation with Jay and Mario and Paul, and a lot of people on the call back in the middle of August. The few things that had jumped out to me, I think first of all, you know, it doesn't identify it, but it's essentially granting coal vest and easement over town property, so I think that's probably something that should go to the town meeting where it's an easement over the town property. There were a couple more minor things about sort of, I think Mario pointed out some of the issues about maintenance responsibilities to make sure that it includes maintenance of pavements and drainage systems.
Exactly.
Just sort of making clear what they would be responsible for. And, and also, you know, there's the, this chance that the, there's going to be a change to the parcel with the tip work that's coming, and the, the document doesn't acknowledge that, so I would want to make sure that that's addressed in there, and also, you know, that it's clear that if this land somehow changes as a result of what happens to the state highway, the town isn't on the hook for anything and they're not, you know, failing to produce something that they're obligated to. And then, sort of bigger picture, you know, I had raised this issue that I, I'm not sure, it's sort of a strange area with the Procurement Act and whether or not this is something that should be either a public bid or something like that. And my proposal to Jay was that we should put this on the applicant and say, you know, explain to us to satisfaction of the town why this isn't, you know, an end run around the Procurement Act, because it, it feels a little fuzzy to me. It's not something I was able to get a quick answer on, but that makes me a little uncomfortable. And then the only other point is just that, you know, it, it was pitched to me as sort of, you know, public parking that would be made available, but the, the agreement does allow them to restrict it to customer parking on site and that sort of thing. So that gets a little more into policy considerations, which is not my job, but it's just something to keep in mind, sort of looking at the package as a whole.
Tom?
I know when we discussed this, it was quite a while ago, we also talked about the fact that there's a bus stop there, and I don't know how that's being addressed in terms of, you know, I know the bus doesn't come very often anymore, but, you know, for folks from Bay Path who would want to take the bus into Springfield, that would be the best stop for them, and so I'd like to see how they're going to address the bus stop issue in terms of making sure it's accessible, still there. Be nice if there was a, you know, a way, there has to be, I know there's going to be a sidewalk there, but, you know, to look at the bus stop issue. And then the other thing is, is there any chance that we could discuss having some bicycle racks put in, in terms of this? Because it's going to be a parking area, could they have parking for bikes? You know, we are a green community, we're trying to promote people riding bikes, and unless we have enough bike racks, people aren't going to ride their bikes anywhere. And I'm hoping that the, you know, businesses moving in would be a place where people would want to ride their bikes to, and, you know, if they, if we don't ask them to put in a bike rack, I don't think they're going to put one in probably. But I would, you know, I throw that out there, I think those are important issues.
Does this not need to go through, sorry.
Go ahead, Mark.
Does this need to go through planning board?
I'm not sure.
Not yet. It would if, if we approved it, but first thing, first things first, as they say.
Right, right, so if we said yes, that's what we have to go through the planning board.
Absolutely.
And then that's, that's where they can, they can make suggestions for bike racks and things of that.
Well, there's no reason you couldn't put that in this agreement either, though. I mean, as for the bus stop, there's no mention of that that I can recall at, at all. And it may get back to the issue of sort of providing public parking, too, you know, in theory, they could, if you were driving there to take a bus or something like that, that would be potentially prohibited by signage, but there's certainly no reason you couldn't put that in this agreement about both access to the bus stop. I mean, obviously, we can't ensure the bus stop stays there, but at least you can ensure public access. And providing bike racks, I mean, I don't see any reason why you couldn't put that in this agreement.
Thank you.
No. Mark?
Yeah, so I went back and pulled my notes from May 15, 2017, which was, which is when they came in front of us. And I got all the pictures and all, I'm willing to share these with you, Mark, because they gave us all these glossy, and my first question is, how does the new proposal differ from the old one? Because I see no difference, and I guess, Jesse, you're not prepared to, to answer that at all, and I think they, they need to, because my notes show things like Tom saying, you know, we wanted a bus stop back then, and it's the exact same proposal. And I think one of the concerns is the, this proposal moves the, actually moves the parking lot out from the building to where it literally abuts the sidewalk. I mean, right now, between the sidewalk, there's a, and I've got some pictures as well, there's a kind of an embankment that goes, goes up, and, and so if anything happened to the street that widened it, moved the sidewalk back, as you indicated, there's, kind of puts this whole program to, you know, to, into a different, different thought process. And so I guess I was looking at that, and, you know, the other thing was that, that, I guess the, the question is, you know, is this, and I guess, Jesse, maybe you answered this, are we ceding property or land from the town to a private individual or private, you know, owner for no consideration? I mean, you know, this is a, it, it, essentially, it's, they're asking for an unlimited easement with control over the, over the land, and I think there's a real concern about the, the town doing that. On the other hand, you know, there's an argument that says, look up and down Route 5, we do it all over the place. I mean, the parking in front of what was Rinaldi's, that's all public land, that's public parking. The parking in front of St. Mary's is public land and public parking, you know, and although Rinaldi's, you know, may say, whoever's in there now control it, it's really public land. And so I think we have to be consistent with what we're doing, both moving forward and retroactively, because we're starting to lose control of, of town land, and I think there's a, that's potentially problematic.
You definitely want to, I think you want to be aware of that and keep that in mind with all of these agreements, is sort of what you're doing with public property. I think that, you know, arguably, the consideration here is maybe the improvements to the roadway that the property owner is willing to do, whether or not that's sufficient, or whether or not there's any price where the town is willing to sort of give this perpetual easement for private use is obviously a policy question, but I think you're right to be thinking about that.
Mark?
So, you know, from my perspective, I think, kind of bigger picture, I think this, this would beautify that corner. There's been vacant storefronts there for quite some time, and they want to, they want to fix the parking lot, they want to fix the means of egress and make it look nicer, make it look more attractive, bring in new businesses. It'll be a change from what's there now, but I think, I think it's a positive change, particularly if there's, there's already a precedent in town that, you know, the property owners will, will maintain the parking lots. They, they have an, a vested interest in making sure that those parking lots are clear and safe and, and, and look, and look nice.
Tom?
Well, there was the issue of a, of a ramp to give access to the building. I know that there was some talk about how they would need a handicap accessible ramp. Remember that came up also? And I haven't seen much on this, because they were talking about on the William Street side, that there should be some sort of a handicap accessible ramp that would go from the sidewalk to the building. Yeah, is that?
Yeah, there's a funky kind of setup there where the existing sidewalk going southbound on Route 5 in front of that property runs into a wall. You can't build that nowadays. State, if we ever get the tip money to do that part of Route 5, is going to make sure that that comes out. There is a certain slope that you have to meet to make sure folks in wheelchairs can navigate it. And then when you turn up going towards Bliss Road, the, you know, it gets very steep there, and I don't know what they'll do. I, I have had conversations with folks from the state about that driveway dumping right into an intersection. That is not going to work for them either. So I caution the developer to make all these improvements, and then in a few years, I hope, we're doing this project, and then they close that or make them do something different. They need to hear that, because I believe that the state's going to make them do something different than it exists today. Are there waivers? Of course there are. Will they get one? I have no idea. But on the outside chance they can't, that may be different than what they're thinking is going to work today. And yes, there's going to have to be a sidewalk at some point to get folks from that sidewalk where the retaining wall is up to the property.
Right, and it's going to need to be ADA compliant and, and, and then get access to the building, that there shouldn't be any barriers, should be barrier free design to the building.
And following up on what Mario said, you know, as town council, my concern in that scenario is also that the town hasn't obligated itself to provide certain, you know, real estate or features that the state then says, you can't do this, and, you know, whether we're off the hook or not remains to be seen. So I think that, you know, his point is a good one, that any agreement that gets signed needs to acknowledge that this question mark is out there, and, you know, if the state comes in and says this, or even if one of the plans that we like the most says that, you know, that, that's something that could happen in the future.
Right, good.
Any other questions on this project?
So where are we going from here, Murray?
Well, I think there's still some behind the scenes work to be done, and talking to the developer require, like, the changes you were talking in that, and especially discussion on where you predict the tip's going to go and the state designs are going to go.
So who, who has those discussions?
I think the town manager, we'll pass this on to the town manager to work with council and DPW. Anything else you want him to consider, you know, pass that on to Jay. Before, I don't want to lose either of you, because I'd like to drop down to one more issue that's here, and that was the speed limit around the high school. We had a discussion on whether that had to go on the warrant, and my understanding is you, you suggested that was something that can be done.
The police chief informed me that the select board would have that authority and that he recommended that a request be sent through the traffic study committee in order to let them, you know, weed out if there's any, any issues with, with any kind of modifications, and then move forward with it based upon their recommendations afterwards.
And so I wanted to ask if either of you have any knowledge or concerns about if we did change the speed limit around the high school to be 20? Anything you've seen in other municipalities that we need to worry about that? No?
No, but I will tell you, and I don't know if you've noticed, if you travel towards the race crosswalk from either direction.
Yeah.
There's a sign several hundred feet in advance of it that says, race crosswalk ahead, slow, and then it has a 20 mph, and it's yellow, small sign.
Oh, it does say 20 mph. Oh, I didn't see that.
Per the advice of State DOT, and this was in a conversation that we had with them about will we have to pay the money back or not if we remove it? And their advice was, because it's not black and white, which is the regulatory sign, it's yellow and white, it's cautionary, it's not forcible. But it works, and so that gives folks kind of the lead time they need to start slowing down before they get to the ring.
Because it takes 20 miles to get over the bump.
Right, that's about the right speed for that, and so it absolutely works on the William Street side. I think it can work on the Bliss side. I think there's more traffic, there's more pedestrian traffic on that side, so it probably makes some sense.
Oh, okay.
But I agree with the police chief and Paul that let the, you know, the traffic committee go out there, they'll take their counts, you'll have more information, make a better decision.
Okay. Tom?
Well, I went to the Pioneer Valley Planning Committee meeting, I talked to Andy Crowe there, who wishes, well, to everybody here, he's now the, the head of the, the chief engineer for the city of Springfield, it's a pretty big job, so. But he, he said that those, the bumps were tip money, and it was, we didn't pay any, anything for those, right? And. And?
Well, a little bit, yes.
Well, a little bit. But there's also grants due, and I know you made me aware of this also, Marie, is there a chance we could get, to put in money for a grant to build additional, you know?
So we, there's a Safe Roots to School grant that we are awarded, and we've eyed a project from Grassy Gutter going eastbound on Bliss Road, installation of a sidewalk to Blueberry, a crossing there, potentially a raised crossing, but we'll talk about this a couple of years down the road. And then there's two or three other crossings the school uses to get to Russell Field. It's not really the best case scenario. We're looking to consolidate those into maybe a second crossing, again, potentially raised, flashing beacons, all the proper signage, similar to what's on William Street. So that's in the works, but it's, the state moved very slow. And so that's like a twenty twenty-two project, twenty twenty-three, something like that.
It won't be that long.
No.
Okay, glad you're on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in.
Can I just correct one thing? Tom mentioned before the pride litigation.
Yes.
So part of that pride litigation has been dismissed, part of it has not. It's sort of, there's a stay right now, agreeing not to pursue that while pride is before the planning board, trying a second time to get their project off the ground there. But it is not completely dismissed. We're still locked a little bit in litigation there. We'll see. Hopefully, it's going to work itself out.
Okay, thanks for the update. But I guess, since Mario's here, as far as the south end, you know, that area where you need to redo some work on Route five right by the Connecticut border, is that something we'll be putting a proposal in to the tip, to Pioneer Valley?
Yes.
Planning?
We've started that process.
By the twenty-fourth, or?
No, that's beyond that. So, if you remember, this past town meeting, Richard sponsored a bill or an article for a hundred thousand dollars. That starts that process. I think we are eyeing like the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six tip for that project. And then it's a crapshoot at that point, so far out that.
Do we have any proposals online to submit to the Pioneer Valley? It's because it's due twenty-fourth.
No, none that I'm aware of.
Yeah. Can we get any? Get it online?
I don't know. I'm a little short right now in the engineering arena.
Yeah, it's helpful. We have an engineer there. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions since we have Mario here? I think one question is on the, when we do the warrant, we're talking later down, one of the things is we were talking about possibly getting that street audit you wanted?
Yes.
And so you know about that?
Yeah, Paul and I talked about it. We had an estimate that I passed along to him, so, yeah, I think that's a wonderful idea.
Sounds good. Well, thank you again for coming in.
Thank you, Paul.
Now, since we're on the speed limit, do you want us to refer this to the traffic committee?
I don't think we need to do anything.
No, Paul said we have to request the traffic committee to look at it.
I guess I can pass along that information and see if they really want something formal. I can write something up.
Okay, all right. Because if we can do a vote, can we just do a vote?
Just let them do it. Do a vote.
Let me just tell them.
Huh?
We'll just tell them.
You'll tell them, okay?
Just make it easy.
It's not a town, but I'll get to them.
Okay.
They'll answer your call.
It's a little early, but is... You're ready? Okay, good, come on up. Take extra chairs. And next, we'll be talking about the new trash barrel program update. And it's show and tell.
It's going to take me three weeks to fill that up. You only have to bring it out once a month. Sell the space.
Hi, I'm Erwin First, Assistant Secretary of the Place, and I'm chairman of the recycling commission. And for the last two, I don't know how long, the last few months, we have been working on a program to highlight the curbside collection program. We've been working with representatives from East Long Meadow, and we wanted to combine the efforts of both communities, figuring we could get a much better contract, much better terms, in terms of price, delivery. We had much more bargaining power. And that worked out very well. The criteria we used were the quality of the bins, certainly the cost, reputation of the company, those were all very important to us. And it all came down to working with the people from Toder. A big reason was, this was the best barrel we found. It's very sturdy. The feedback we've gotten from other people who use it has been very good. The price we worked out, it was a very competitive bid, and they were just falling all over each other in terms of how can we do better? And it worked out very well in our favor. Much of it, most of, the cost of these bins will be covered in a grant. And Arlene will explain more about that.
But you should note, it's not going to be blue, it's going to be black and white, our tan colors, just like this. And on the side, instead of it saying Toder, it's going to say, property of the town of Long Meadow. Nice, nice, big letters on that, so it's black and white. But we're very excited about the barrel, and it's, anybody want to add anything to the barrel?
To the barrel, it's up now.
These question and answer sheets have gone out to everybody in town already. Just a little heads up that this is coming. As the delivery date approaches, we'll give everybody more and more information about when they're expected, what they can do, and what they can expect from the hauler, what they can do with their old barrels. All that information will be worked out. We're working very closely with our current hauler, Waste Management, along with Toder, and you'll be kept up to date as time goes on.
Thank you. So this is our team, and we've been meeting regularly with, also with Amy from East Long Meadow on this program. So we wanted to go over some of the highlights of what we gave to you in case you had any questions. We really want to be able to respond to any concerns or questions you might have. Erwin has hit on some of the bullets right off the bat, but I just wanted to emphasize that we've been talking about the recycling commission and DPW about a uniform cart program for well over eighteen months, if not two.
So if I could jump in here, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Not that long ago, probably around the same timeline that Arlene just mentioned, eighteen months, maybe twenty-four months ago, we did an enforcement activity through town, and we went after the largest barrel, the ninety-six gallon barrel. So if you drive through the city of Springfield, you can imagine how big those are. That's the right size. And I can't remember the number, but I want to say it was like around two hundred folks who we identified through Waste Management, and some other folks that were abusing the system. We wrote them letters. We told them after a certain date that, you know, we weren't going to pick it up anymore. Most of them complied, bought new barrels, and it wasn't an issue. Then we engaged Waste Management to kind of do a survey of the rest of the town and to figure out what everybody else had. And there was about forty percent of the folks who were still with a larger barrel. It was hard to manage those couple hundred folks with the big barrels, so I can't think of what the number was, forty percent, so it's got to be like two thousand, twenty-five hundred?
It was larger than we thought, yeah.
More than we could manage. And so how do you solve a problem like that? Well, sure enough, the state come out with this grant where they kind of subsidized nine tenths of the cost of it. It just was a perfect fit for us. So now we can really go after that other forty percent that was still outside of the right-sized barrel. So I think this is going to go a long way with reducing our trash expenses and increasing our recycling revenue.
And just to say, we originally had been looking at a quarter of a million dollars to do this, and then when the state came out with this grant, we're now, and they're paying about nine tenths of it, we're paying forty thousand instead of two hundred, twenty thousand dollars for this, for the program. So we're, I think we're very fortunate, I think it's going to be a great thing for the town. So we just wanted you to understand some of the economics of that and why we think that's good. So so far, what we've done is we've spent a lot of time picking the barrel, picking the vendor, and now we're into the final rush toward the implementation where it's going to actually go out on the street. So we're very excited about that. The Q and A has shook the bushes a little bit, and we're getting some feedback, some questions, and that's good. We want to, it gives us time to answer those and to have people understand what's going to happen. A free barrel's going to be delivered to their house, that's the message that we want to get out. So our efforts right now, we're happy to be partnering with, well, I point to Liz, even though she's on the Long Meadow Recycling Commission, she is the recycling coordinator for East Long Meadow, and it's just been a great, it's really been good for, I think, both towns to be able to be working together. The prices came down, the publicity to be, we'll learn from each other, and both programs will be stronger. And they want to go out to bid with us for trash collection, so all that is going to, all this will help make that a better process. We talk about that later. So what we're doing now is we're working with Toder, with the company, on the final details of the distribution. The cost includes assembly and distribution. They come into town, they bring their barrels in, they put them together, they deliver them to every resident. The code on the front attaches that barrel to the resident. All these carts have RFID numbers.
To the residents.
To the residents. Right, not to the residence, exactly.
Right, to the property.
To the property. So each property will have its own barrel, and that would be coded. So we're anticipating now that this distribution is going to be late October or early November. We will have that date, we hope, this week, so we can put that etched in stone. We're working on the staging areas with both towns. We're working on residential lists. Everything has to be sent to Toder, so each household, if it's a two-family household, they get the two barrels, and the three-family gets three barrels. And I know your ag mom has gone through all this, so you're an expert right now.
Absolutely.
But, so those are the details that we're working out right now. And then there will be a plastic bag attached to each barrel as each cart when it's delivered to the household, and we get to put some information in that. So there'll be a piece on the care of the cart. There'll be a, we're developing a bullet page that Mario is working on, of important bullets, so people know this is the town's cart, this is for you, this is the only thing you can put your trash in, lid has to be closed. We're also going to include our trash bulletin, our brochure, our new brochure in there, so people will know how to recycle, how to reduce, how to reduce their waste, how to compost, all these things that'll help them get the best use out of their barrel. So we're working on that. And then the public education piece will be, you know, is unfolding. Certainly, the Q and A will be a cornerstone of that public education piece. Stephanie, I believe, has set up or will be setting up a dedicated site on our webpage. There'll be article, there'll be something in the Council on Aging newsletter, there'll be cable TV, all the stuff, Facebook. Mario wants to do a press event?
I think we should. I would also encourage the town to maybe use the all-call, like we do for emergencies, to let folks, it's coming like next week, to prepare and let them know that what day, and start using it right away, all the important things.
Yeah, and there's really not a lot, we talked about this internally, a lot to prepare for. I mean, what's going to happen is you're going to have a new barrel, it's going to show up at your curb, and then from the following week, you should start using this barrel and not your old barrel. We'll be working with the hauler to recognize that they're only going to be picking up one barrel going forward, and with maybe a grace period, but we have to talk about that internally. And that, from there on, it should be, it should be very, very easy. We're working with the hauler and enforcement, because now it's going to be very clear, literally, black and white, no other barrel is going to be used. And so if another barrel's out there, that would be ticketed and rejected, it would be left. We are working on a collection program, a recycling program, we're calling it, for any unused, the old barrels. We figure many people, myself, Erwin, will be using their other barrels, the current barrels for maybe for recycling, or for yard waste, or anything else that they want to use it. We'll also have a collection program and have worked it out with the MRF that we can have those barrels recycled through the MRF on Bernie Avenue. So that's what we're working on. The enforcement with the hauler will be key going forward. We're meeting with them actually next week, and that'll probably be more meetings with them before the distribution. One of the key messages we want to get out is that the bear, the lid should be closed, not, or that, there will be a sticker involved with that as well, so. Questions, comments, concerns?
The one thing I was going to suggest is, I've never had to buy the extra bag, but I might have to now. So maybe the stores will want to put those near the front and let people know.
They are, that's where they are.
That's where they are.
They can't leave them just naked on the shelf. They have to, they're behind the counter, but that's where they are.
So people buy them right there at the cashier's.
Yeah, it's in bag bags, for those of you and myself that doesn't, bags of five, it's a dollar seventy-five a bag.
Because probably forty-two percent will need to start buying bags.
Not necessarily. If they start recycling and donating, using the swap shop and all the other amenities we have at the recycling center, you might find that you don't need to use those bags. And you can cut up styrofoam, make it smaller, so it can be smaller.
Do we have anyone available who would work with residents to help them?
Redress.
Her personal cell phone will be announced on air.
I'm happy to do that. We've made a, we've made a comment about that before. And Liz, Liz is really good at it.
Oh, yeah, I just, one thing is, you know, with black barrels, you know, it's good there's going to be white on there. Any chance that we could have reflecting stuff just for nighttime, so people don't, you know, you always?
Well, interesting, most of the barrels right now are black.
Yeah, but so will the white be filled in, or will it just be that kind of lettering?
You can put reflective tape on yourself if you're going to hit your own garbage can.
Although it's easy enough to put some white reflective tape.
Sure.
It is easy enough. I mean, I don't, you know, I guess we may want to promote for some people. I know I'm on a main street, so it'd be a good idea for me to have reflecting tape.
But your barrel's not in the street, is it?
Well, if it's windy, it'd be good. I mean, I don't put it in the street, though.
No, no, of course not.
So, and the other thing is, I hope that, you know, in future contract negotiations with trash haulers, I got the sense from you in one of our discussions that this could give us a better deal, or not really? Because it would make it easier, they could just lift them by machine, I mean?
It's, it would be, it's my impression that the, that this is going to make it, our contract more advantageous for the haulers. I mean, I don't know how much financially that break they'll give us, but certainly, it's a lot easier to go, if your responsibility, which it is, is for them to enforce our program, and this is, this is all they have to enforce, instead of five or six different sized barrels and all kinds of conglomerations, it's, it really is going to save them a lot of agita, because it's, it's just really very straightforward. So, and we, I asked our, and I have it in writing, our hauler, if he felt that this was a good idea and would be good, and he said he absolutely supported this completely. So I think it's going to, I think it is going to help us.
And so for those listening who don't know what agita is?
Everybody knows what agita is.
It's not Greek.
Mark?
So I think I'm within that forty percent you're talking about.
Yeah.
I blame Home Depot, really?
I might be too, yes.
I'm not going lower, obviously, I'm going higher.
If you're, if you're the typical Home Depot one, it's really only a few gallons different.
Yeah, thank you.
No, it is.
So how far can we keep it?
Close completely, okay.
If you have a modified top, they're going to notice me. Might have put a latch on it, or you have to latch.
One of the questions I got, actually, somebody emailed me a question about that they, especially when they're going to be away for Monday, or the day after the trash is picked up, you know, they sometimes take their trash and put it in one trash bag and put it out by the curb. They don't put it in a barrel at all, so they don't have a barrel that rolls around. How are we going to handle that?
My stance would be, it has to be in a barrel.
I'm surprised the animals haven't ripped apart.
No, I, you know, I think the issue is, would we rather have barrels flying around town for some, you know, especially people who end up going away the next day or something like that, or, and I understand that it may lend itself to...
That's the issue. Where's the stop? Slippery slope. I think the company line should be, use the barrel. It's heavier. Ask a friend or neighbor to bring the barrel in if you're not going to be in for the weekend. This isn't the only community that uses them, they can figure it out.
Any other questions?
Because Meg, come on in.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to thank you guys for doing this. I know it's a lot of work, and it's something that's important for the community, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your support. It makes a big difference, I think, as it does roll out. There will be more questions, I've spoken to DPW staff this afternoon, and already from the Q and A that went out, some, that question mark has come, came back.
Plus some others.
And you mentioned about the ownership, that it's, we have to make it clearer that this is the property of the town of Long Meadow, so when you move, you leave the barrel, and it comes with the house, so it's the property of the town. There'll be some, there'll be some questions and issues we'll be back and forth with you on before the implementation, but at the thirty-day mark, we have a big conference with the company, and we work out some of the final details.
Is there a warranty on these barrels?
Yes, twelve years.
Okay, so.
And they're, and they're.
Sure being over, run over by a something, but I.
Lids and, and wheels are the things that break first. Uh, we bought an extra one.
No, they gave us, they gave us, uh, free one percent of the order, extra wheels and, and, uh.
Some, um, stock of at DPW and as folks call and complain that something's broken, we can get out there and try to fix them.
But also they'll replace, if it's, if it's a, if it's run over by, if the hauler's fault or something, then it's, that's different, but.
I was just thinking in the wintertime, they freeze and crack or something like that.
I think, I think their reputation and their track record is pretty good on that.
Okay, that's fine.
That, that we should, that should be covered, but we, we did purchase some extra inventory.
In inventory, um.
So we're covered in that, in that regard. So the, the grant will cover one barrel per residence, house, resident, residence of the house. And anything extra is above and beyond the grant.
Can I also sugge- suggest you consider putting in that envelope, uh, some kind of a, I know we have these recycle stickers that people might want to come, turn their old barrels into recycling barrels by putting a sticker on it. And I don't know if you want to distribute those generally or by request only, I don't know.
We just ordered, just ordered a bunch more this morning and, uh, I, I'd rather just have them pick them up. Well, they're available at the town hall, DPW. We can have them more, more available for people, but, uh, a lot of people put, they do all kinds of creative things with their recycling barrels that are, don't require the sticker, then it's fine if they want to use the sticker, but, um, and, and they, the hauler can lift this and I'm sure they'll, they'll be lifting.
Sure.
The, the, the cart.
The truck, yeah.
The cart that does lift it, so. We're very excited. I think it's going to be a cleaner, a cleaner neighborhood, a cleaner streets and, uh, going forward, it'll save us money. It's going to be the gift that keeps on giving.
Yeah, do you want to spend just a few minutes telling us what we have to look forward to this year?
Wow, yeah. So we're in the enviable position of having three of our, uh, solid waste related contracts end on exactly the same date. That is July first, two thousand twenty. So it's the Murph contract, the disposal contract for our trash and the hauling contract. So in order of when we should be working on them or knowing things, we should first be hearing about the Murph contract yesterday. But we, we haven't heard yet. Uh, so that will give us an indication of, uh, we will, there's no secret, we will no longer be having free, uh, recycling unless the markets are really good and then we can get revenue. But that's, right now the markets are not so good. So that should be, you know, within our radars shortly. This, the next thing is the disposal contract and Mar- Mario and I, in fact, are just, uh, meeting, we're by phone Thursday, ten o'clock. Uh, I've been putting out feelers to the five possibilities in the region. Uh, there's some good interest, which is good for competition. And in the past, we've done this collaborative, collaboratively with about thirteen communities in the valley. And there is interest in going at it that way again. So within a month, I would imagine we would have a, a good plan and if not, and then maybe an RFQ or maybe, we don't, we don't have to bid it. We can negotiate it, but we'll see what the, what, what we get, what it looks like. And, uh, I'm excited about the phone call on, on Thursday. So that's going to be a, a good start. So within a month, we'll have more information about that. Then the next one, which is the more complicated one, is the hauling contract. And East Long Meadow would like to partner with us. We've done that in the past and that was advantageous to our pricing as well. And that's up to you if you want to go out to bid or not. Typically, we get a nice, you know, the, the haul, the current hauler comes in and says, I can give you the best deal in town. And then we, we look at that and we say, maybe or maybe not. We go out to bid and always lower. But that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a strategic thing that we could decide. As far as, I think East Long Meadow and Long Meadow agree by January first that RFQ has to be out the door. It's pretty well-written, uh, already, so it's just a matter of tweaking it. And, uh, Liz has already read it over and has some questions and comments to add to it. So we'll get, we can get on that in advance of, of that, that process, so. By, by this next annual town meeting, there'll be some issues, I would imagine, related to, to trash. Price of, of disposal, I don't think is going to go up much, but we can, we're offsetting that a little bit by this, by this barrel. It'll help keep our prices down in terms of disposal. Um, the hauling, the, the collection and hauling, um, depending on where we go with our trash, which we'll know before that goes out, will help mitigate that a little bit. I think this barrel's going to help mitigate the hauling costs a little bit.
Does anyone have questions on those three contracts? Keep us informed.
Well, we will.
It's going to be a busy, exciting year.
Would you like additional copies of this? I'll pass these around to you because you all have them in your, you carry them with you probably every day.
Right next to our charter.
Your back pocket. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for all your work.
Did that come in the back, back of your car, Ruin?
Sorry?
That come in the back of your car, no?
I, I delivered it.
You had to deliver.
You can actually put it in my phone.
I'll come back tomorrow and get it.
Oh, it's up to you. But look how we see. Oh, there we go. Bye, thank you. Someone go to the block party requests? Is any motions for those?
Sure, I'll, I'll, we approve a, a block party for Crespi Circle for September twenty-second without a rain date.
Is there a second? Um, discussion, all those in favor? The next one?
Will we approve a block party for, uh, Greenacre Road for October sixth without a rain date?
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
How move we approve a Halloween part, road closing for Green, actually it's a block party for Greenacre on October thirty-first?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Finally, I'll approve, I'll, I'll, uh, move that we approve, uh, the road closure of Farmington Road on October thirty-first, according to their, uh, request.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to sign those? Oh, here it comes, they're coming down. Okay, uh, draft warrant. Thank you, Paul. I know this was a tremendous amount of work to pull this together and I want to thank you.
That's a lot of work.
Do you want to just give us the, uh, the highlights?
Um, I don't know, I can quickly go one by one. I mean, the highlights would be, we're looking for a number of, of articles that are going to, I want to say quite a number of expenditures in the fall as compared to any other time. But, you know, very, very quickly, the first article is the CPA money, which we do annually at the Fall Town Meeting. Required by law to transfer ten percent into their designated fund balances. Article two, we hit upon very briefly is there, we have an estimate from, uh, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to do the, uh, street, um, analysis or assessment. That would cover that fifteen thousand dollars raised and appropriated is about what we have left over after meeting that two percent goal of the tax, uh, tax rate. There's a tax levy going up to the two and a half percent. Forty-five thousand dollars from the police chief. He has, uh, two deployments currently that the, uh, people are overseas. He has one gentleman who is out on, uh, has light duty, um, and he has a retirement coming up. Um, he's calculating that if he could have additional money coming from the ambulance receipts, um, that we would take it from, that he would be in a better position for, he's going to continue with one deployment when that other gentleman retires. And, you know, anything about the light duty person, he would not really miss any type of, um, he wouldn't be shorthanded for very long, per se. And then we wouldn't be adding overall to the full-time equivalencies because once those people departed, uh, through retirements, we'd be right back to the normal amount. But this would keep his operations going, keep his, uh, his ambulance money flowing in, quite honestly, too. And have, you know, just staffing with some reduction in overtime.
It has a thirty percent increase in cost, was that?
I forget the ex, uh, thirty percent sounds high for one year, but it could be up thirty percent over a number of years. I don't recall exactly the number that he has there, but he continues to, um, utilize two ambulances, um, you know, more than usual. The revenue last year was nearly a million dollars. He's expecting a million dollars this fiscal year. Article number four is making our first FY two thousand and twenty appropriation in anticipation of us borrowing on the Council on Aging money. Article number five is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It's an estimate to cover the July sixth microburst that happened in town. Article number six, I want to change that number to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is the additional money recommended or that we need to close out phase one of the Tina Lane Bernie, uh, Road landfill. That number is coming from tie-in bond directly as, as to the total cost. Article number seven is the hundred thousand dollars right now that we're saying some of it will be used for the, uh, for protecting the town's interests with the national, um, the natural gas, um, facility that is proposed at the country club. I don't know if we want to change that also to include the DPW.
Yes.
Uh, so we will change that wording. Article number eight will be reduced to sixty-five thousand dollars as we have spoken about the municipal vulnerability and the timing of the, uh, grants. Our twenty-five percent matching share that we'll be shooting for is only going to be sixty-five thousand dollars. Article number nine is fifty thousand dollars where we had a, this would come, this would directly supplement the forestry expense account, the budget line item. Also dealing with cleanup cost of the violent storms that knocked down trees and limbs, uh, over certain parts of, uh, of the town. I forget the exact date of this other storm. Article number ten, uh, again, selectmen policy, anything over five hundred thousand dollars left, um, after we kind of clean up the books and have the tax rate kind of set, uh, will be transferred to the, uh, operational stabilization fund. As I mentioned earlier, I'm anticipating our free cash is going to be close to, uh, one point three million. Doing the math from all the other articles, uh, it looks like we can put in a hundred and sixty thousand dollars into the operational stabilization fund. Hopefully it becomes a little bit more. Article number eleven is the actual wording from Bond Council with regard to any additional, um, bond authorization that we may need for the DPW. I'm also going to have to work with the DOR to see if that will take a supplemental vote, um, not necessarily a town meeting, but by the electorate, electorate. Anyway, um, I will work with, um, uh, the DOR and hopefully have that answered by the time we get to town meeting. If there'll be an additional vote that's required there.
Quick question, does that mean we need to have a special, uh, election before or can it wait till June?
I'm hoping it can, maybe we wait till June. I'd hate to have to have a special one. You know, if, if it does become that, we're almost better off.
Pushing this till, uh, May, town meeting?
Well, see, it gets complicated because then technically we can't sign contracts if we don't have authorization to, to do something. So, um, you know, we're kind of in a catch twenty-two. We can't sign additional contracts to complete the work if we don't actually have the money appropriated, so.
So we might need to, but you will get back to us if we do need to.
Right, right.
You're talking about still Fall Town Meeting, but another, maybe vote, uh, a month later.
Right, it'd be a valid vote, um, at some point in time and this, you know, again, depending on when we need to do this, we'll find that out also.
Okay, and does that include extra contingency?
Well, we haven't determined what, what the number will be, so that, that, you know, I, I imagine there were want, I imagine there's already a request for some extra contingency to build that contingency back up. So I'll be working with, with Collier's to come up with a number that is going to be all-inclusive.
Will you have that by the twenty-fifth?
I hope so.
Okay.
You know, certainly we'll have a ballpark, uh, maybe not the exact number, but we should be pretty darn close by that time.
Okay, good.
And Paul, just a quick question. So is that going to include the asbestos, um, change orders as well as the construction delays?
Yes, it will. It's going to be all-inclusive, so we do not have to go back to them hopefully again unless something really crazy happens. But I'm not anticipating we've, we've hit enough walls there. Article twelve is something that Mario says was somehow missed at the annual town meeting. It's replacing water mains on Fairview Street.
Paul, why would, why would we do that in the fall? We're not going to, we're not going to have the construction during the, the winter anyway, I would assume.
Well, you potentially may have it in the spring. I, I can ask Mario, I mean.
It's, it's unusual to do this kind of a, a bond item in, in a special Fall Town Meeting. I mean.
We, we, we asked for a request from the departments. This is what he submitted. Um, you know, it's going to be up to you folks. I'll ask him if it really makes a big difference to him. But, you know, again, he did ask that it be put on here. I just don't know how much of an impact it has on his, uh, operation. Maybe he'd be happy to wait until, till May just because of, um, his engineering turnover. Article thirteen, again, an estimate from tie-in bond was recently received. Phase two of the, uh, capping of the Bernie Road Tina Phil landfill is estimated to cost another two million dollars. So that is a bond authorization for such. Article fourteen is an article, um, to put the, uh, with, to memorialize the permanent building committee in the charter. You folks may want to look closely at the wording. I've kind of looked at, at Jay's wording and some of the other proposals that were there and put it together. So you may want to just look at, at that to make sure that it meets all your needs and desires that you have with regards to memorializing that. Article fifteen is the, um, to see if the, uh, if the town will authorize the Long Meadow Select Board to petition the state in order that we change, excuse me, the, um, now the Board of Election Commissioners back to the Board of Registars.
Cause is this, if, if this were to pass, we still have to wait two years to do it or this is in place of waiting two years?
This is in place of waiting two years. In the absence of this, we're, we're waiting that three-year timetable or May of two thousand and twenty-two. And then article seventeen, there were two proposals that were written, Mark had written one.
Sixteen?
Um, sixteen? Okay, article sixteen, I'm sorry, yep. Article sixteen, um. Yeah, the voting hours to, again, put those within the bylaws that the hours would begin at eight o'clock in the morning and go.
I thought we wanted to change it to seven.
I'm sorry.
It says eight.
Okay, yeah.
It currently says eight, but I thought the.
Yeah, you, you, you're right, right.
Hold on, the polls at seven, it says at the bottom there.
Yeah, it says it at the bottom. There, this has to be reworded. I took this from somebody else who had put it in there. Okay, we'll do the rewording on that. Article seventeen are just two examples of trying to accomplish the same thing, um, where we would be, um, charging for water both on a fixed and a variable rate, i.e. a distribution charge or, you know, a charge of getting the water to the house and then the actual meter charge. I don't know if there's any preference either way. You know, Mark had written one, I had simultaneously written one and, and again, I just put them both in because they were both written. Then there's some other ones that have not been written yet. We potentially may have a small bill of prior year, the easements, as we spoke about a little bit earlier, for Dwight Road and the North Interceptor Sewer Project, hazardous material bylaw. I'm not quite sure with the EverSource Columbia Gas Conservation Projects for town, town buildings. I'm, I'm not sure who will be a lead on that for any of that. Jay has information, anything like that. The charging stations, um, I did look at the information that Stephen had provided to the board, uh, a number of months ago. There's a ton of information there. I'm trying to decipher and pull out the cost there and if, you know, if we're going to be doing that and how we're going to be doing that. But there was, again, just an overload of information that was provided and there's not a simple, it's going to cost X that is out there. So we can write that one up and potentially if we're looking for additional, um, money on the LED project. I know I personally have been a little bit lax in looking at a lot of these things, but we're meeting Friday and we'll, we'll determine that budget, um, to see if additional money is needed above and beyond the eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars that was authorized in May.
Am I in that meeting?
I think you said you couldn't make it. I don't know, Mark, that was the one where Tango was going to call us.
That's right, yeah, I was supposed to be at an event, but I'm not going, so I can.
Oh, good.
What time is it?
Two, one, one or two?
No, it's after, it's west coast time, so it's.
I'll tell you in a second.
But don't you guys have green community money you can apply for, for those two? You apply, it has to be, Green Community has to be in by February, right?
Yeah, I'm, I haven't been too far involved.
They just announced, in fact, I'm going tomorrow. They're having an event in Southbridge, they're announcing the award. So we just got, Agolom just got a pretty big award, so then we'll be starting the next application period for next year.
Yeah.
So one, one of the things that, just so everybody here is up to date, one of the things that we found was that the, when we, when we did the, the, the traffic, the, the streetlight budgeting, that the contracts that were run through the, uh, the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, MAPC, with state DOER funding, limited their, their subsidies and it's, it's, it's. MAPC, with state DOER funding, limited their, their subsidies and it's to, to what's called Cobra Head lights, the old traditional lights that reach out and kind of shine down. And we have a whole bunch of decorative lights in town. And so, you know, we did not include those and we need to go back and look at it. I spent some time in the last couple of days and I've shared it with Paul and Mark today. But, you know, looking at the economics of these things, I think that each step is independently justifiable and what we've done is kind of done, if step one is buy our streetlights and step two is convert the Cobra Heads, step three is convert the decoratives, I think the funding we've approved is like steps two and a half, not quite all of step three. And we're going to need to work with our contractor on this because it's interesting. I was talking to a resident of town who lives in one of the developments where they, sections of town where they own their own streetlights. And he said, oh, we've already switched our streetlights over. I said, well, how'd you do that? He said, well, I got out a big ladder and we reached up there and we unscrewed the bulbs. Went to Home Depot and screwed in LED bulbs and, and sure enough, I said, well, give us a list so we know we're paying for them. But if decorative lights are really that easy to convert, and when I looked at the list, it looked like there are awful lot of lights in town that are similar to those, that it may be a pretty low cost. And so before we run out and say we need another eight thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars to convert the decorative LEDs, we literally may be able, you know, do it much, much, much less expensive. And I think we need to get the cost, the economic analysis I did really depends a lot on how big are the bulbs that we have. And apparently according, and this was Dave Marinelli who did it in his, in his neighborhood, he said, well, they're only hundred watt bulbs and we put in seventeen watt LEDs, which is about the switch. If all we got is hundred watt bulbs putting in seventeen watt LEDs, I mean, it's pretty simple. And I looked through the list today and, and there's a lot of what look like decorative lights that say two hundred and fifty watt sodium vapor lamps and all that kind of stuff. But there's also looks like a lot of other ones. So that's what Paul was referring to. Do we need more money for LED conversion? It would be that third phase. We, I think financially it's justifiable for us to do them all, all in one shot and we're, you know, going to get the numbers and crank the numbers. We're having the contractors, Tango, take a look at our decoratives and that's what the phone call on Friday is about. They're going to look detailed at the, at the decoratives and tell us if all they have to do is go in there and screw in their light bulbs or not.
That's wonderful. And is that it with the warrant?
That's it as far as I know today.
When do we need to act on this warrant?
We have to vote on October seventh, right?
No, no, the twenty-first is your drop dead date.
Oh, it is, so we still have time.
Right.
I just was asking him to get it moving so we could have the twenty-fifth, this meeting.
Right.
And then we will solidify things as we go down.
Normally at this time you get a list, but I said, let's just go to it.
Yeah.
I just, I just want to comment how good you are with numbers, Paul. I looked at the document and it mentioned seventy percent, last year was seventeen percent increase and this year he mentioned fourteen percent for the month of August. So you said, well, around thirty percent. If you add those numbers, you're one percent. You knew I was off.
It just sounded so high for one year.
Yeah, I know, but you're right on the ball. You probably have that stuff just so accessible, you know.
Just a while.
That's why he makes the big bucks. He's great with numbers.
Yeah, we're lucky to have you.
Well, it's a lot of work. I can't thank you enough, Paul, for pulling this together. So now let's do him a favor and give him the goals. So you need directives, right?
I need to know what the, what's up the select board sleeves when it comes to moving on with the FY twenty-one budget proposals. I have, you know, yeah, the goals would be helpful and then, you know, how they will then impact what is already written for a budget instruction and things to that nature and any of my mathematical equations that I put in also back there that show typical we're short hundreds of thousands of dollars when I put in my assumptions.
Right. So first of all, I attended finance committee this, and they were doing a letter they were going to get to us by today.
I think it's back in, isn't it?
Yeah, it was in our packet.
It was in the packet?
Yeah, it was definitely in our packet.
Okay, so they were requesting that we don't go up to the two and a half. They were requesting one point eight.
One point eight four was their average that they had and that's over a ten-year period. So in order not to hit the levy limit.
And I was, I put together the set of goals and I, anyone who sent me stuff, I merged it in. But if we could just look at the budget directives, I know every year we'll be decreasing the amount of the increase under two and a half percent and the finance committee is asking us to go to one point eight four. I was actually thinking of going lower of one point seven five as a target. But again, all we can do is to make directives. You're going to put all the balancing together to see what we're able to do.
With, with these budget assumptions that I have written out for you, the numeric presentation is right behind it.
Okay.
And it does include the prop two and a half increase only utilizing one point seven five of that two and a half percent. But as I said, and it's not anything out of the norm, we begin the assumptions with a large deficit and we have done that year in and year out and certain things work to our favor. We make the appropriate cuts and we, you know, we get the budget balance by the time it goes to town meeting.
All right, let me try to find your document because I lost my packet now. It wasn't in one of the additional, it was in the original packet, right?
Yes, it was in the original packet. It should be under old business if yours comes in that way.
So Marie, while you're looking, can I just, I just had a comment that, that if we, if we move to one point seven five or one point seven four instead of two percent, I think that the balance, the two things we're having to balance is, what does that do to services? We've always tried to make a level service budget, you know, and are we starting to strangle, strangle services relative to what it does to, if you will, extend out our life to live before we hit the tax ceiling cap? By the way, there's a tax ceiling task force meeting tomorrow. But, but it's, it seems to me and I, most of the information I'd say is anecdotal rather than analytical, that the pain is, is far more than the gain by, by cutting it that extra quarter percent. We're not really extending out our, our life before we hit the cap that much and we're going to do a, a real job on our, on our, on our services. And I appreciate the effort of the finance committee, but we're, in my opinion, better off, you know, putting it all out, full court presses they say, on doing something to solve the, the tax cap problem as opposed to dial a thousand deaths along the way because what we'll do is we'll start strangling the community next year, twenty twenty-one, prior to, you know, even if we haven't, haven't hit the cap, as opposed to saying we're going along and we know we need to do something. That's just my, my opinion of the, of the process and my recommendation would be that we recognize the issue, but we take a different approach.
Mark?
I mean, I tend to agree with you, Mark, because I think, I think we're going to have to hit the cap before anybody's going to listen to us. All right, so we're going to have to, if we want, in terms of lobbying legislators in Boston, we're going to need to show some little bit of suffering and show that we've actually hit the cap and it's not, it's not going to go back, it's not going to get better. You know, even if we started now in terms of a coherent lobbying effort with our, our people from Long Meadow and some of the other Western Mass communities, that's still going to take some time and it's really not going to hit ground zero until one of the communities is actually at the, at the limit. And then you have, you have, you have good arguments. It's an old law, you know, if you look at, you look at this, I think it's seventeen out of the top twenty highest rates for all of Western Mass.
Right, yeah.
You know, there's, you can make a reasonable argument to change it, but I think, I don't think anybody's going to touch it until we've actually hit it. So to your point, to go down to one point seven five initially, I certainly supported that, but that's, that's, that's a good point, something to consider.
Well, one of the reasons I'm pushing for the one point seven five and to try to make that as a target is it's not just the fact that we have to show responsibility because we're coming up to it and no one wants to hit the wall. I think we can solve it without hitting the wall. But also people have been hit really hard with taxes between the building of the DPW, the building of the, and none of that goes into the cap. That's on top of the cap. So I think responsibly we have to start taking the pressure off of that. And we've finally every year been taking the pressure off and we're not talking about huge amounts of money. What's the difference between going at two and going to two point, one point seven five?
A hundred and twenty thousand maybe?
Yeah, so it's just a slow easing off of the pressure. And if you look at the numbers, say, oh, it's not that much per household, but I think every little bit counts. So I was thinking, go down to the one point seven five. I doubt he'll be able to keep it at that, but have that as a target and then start to look at the other things that we've been putting money aside. I think we should be backing off and changing our OPEP policy. I know you'll be thrilled to hear this.
I put that in my request.
Yeah, I've been waiting for years for Moody to finally recognize that we're putting money away. They're not doing it, but they are recognizing we're not putting away enough on our stabilization fund and that is hurting us. So I'm thinking pull off of the OPEP, maybe just put a solid amount rather than the escalation clause we've been putting in and start putting in escalation clauses into our policy of, you know, the pay ourselves first, pay the operational stabilization fund first rather than what's ever left over and then start backing off that way. So, and the other tool I was hoping to give Paul to make it easier to balance this was start shifting more of our actual expenses into the enterprise funds so that the storm water, the projects that right now are becoming huge because of our weather conditions are no longer being handled by only the property owners. When it goes into the stormwater utility, then our nonprofits are also having to pay for what is the general cost in the town. So you're now shifting our costs away from property taxes and towards the enterprise funds. And I know you've always said, well, that wasn't the purpose of it. For me, that was always one of it was to try to protect us from hitting the cap.
So nonprofits have to pay into an enterprise fund?
Yeah, they have to pay into our stormwater utility. And if they, they could, they're actually more expensive, the commercials and the nonprofits because they have bigger area, they can mitigate it.
It's impervious surface.
Impervious surfaces. They can mitigate it a bit, but still it's now suddenly being shared by all parties across town.
So Marie, I just want to be sure, because you started out by saying taxes are too high and people are being impacted by taxes.
Yeah.
But a shift to enterprise funds doesn't address that. You know, the people are, and we've acknowledged it this year, you know, taxes only went up two percent, but the average taxpayer because of the shift saw their taxes and fees go up two and a half percent. And it wasn't like something we were trying to hide. You know, the, the tax cap drove the shift, but let's not say we're doing it because our taxes are too high and we're trying to save our residents' money. I'd like to do that, but the shift doesn't do that.
Well, you don't shift the full amount. In other words, I don't think we should take, take the two and, if we go to one point seven five, we don't take that extra point seven five, which would take us up to two and a half and shift it all to stormwater utilities. We still have to be decreasing, but I think one of the things we also do is start increasing stormwater utility and the other water and sewer to make sure they're covering their projects. And maybe we have to start looking at the garbage more too. But we have to bring people's taxes down.
But my argument is we've got to bring people's total payments down and that's why I, I would say a budget that sets level services with an increase of no more than two percent in total taxes and fees. And that, you know, if we do it by shifting more in, you know, three years ago I was sitting here saying, we need to keep it in the tax base because people can deduct that on their federal taxes. So that went away, that argument for me. But it doesn't go, the argument that doesn't go away is the argument of saying, you know, we're going to hold everybody's total taxes and fees at two percent. And that way if we just shift some of it to fees, it does help us with the tax cap situation, but it also manages the situation where everybody says my taxes are going up. I mean, let's face it, the, the numbers are, we, we, we just approved, you know, budgets, budgets, excuse me, we just approved, I'm just pulling out the number, we just approved contracts, extensions that are all two percent plus for the next three years. You know, our, our salaries are eighty, eighty-five percent of our town's expenses, you know, so if we're two and, two and a half percent on salaries, you know, and.
That's not going to be level service. You're going to see cut of services.
Well, I, I think you, I, I don't think that's the town people want is a, is a cut in services.
Well, Paul, do you think you could go at two percent without cut and still have level services?
I think if you only went to two percent.
Including, he's saying including stormwater utility.
Taxes and fees.
Taxes and fees at two percent. You're looking at now cuts of services.
Here's the thing with taxes. You have debt exclusions.
Not counting the debt exclusions.
Okay, if you're backing out the debt exclusions, it's a different story because that's going to throw everything off.
Right, and we got a lot of new debt exclusions.
Now, let me ask you another question. You also say taxes, are you saying two percent of the two and a half or are you saying a two percent bottom line total?
Bottom line.
Bottom line for me. Okay, so you, if you have new growth that comes in at five hundred thousand, are you going to use it or are you going to save it?
Well, if you put it that way, if we, if we really have that new growth, Paul, which I didn't realize we did, then we.
No, we're not going to, I'm just saying as an example.
That's why, to me, they're indistinguishable, but the two percent was people's tax rates. The, the total taxes and, you know, that, that's what I intended to say. The total taxes and fees that people pay through, you know, stormwater utility, through water bills, sewer bills and their, and their general tax bill should go up no more than two percent. I mean, that, that's a real challenge, Marie, to do that.
I don't think you could do it without cutting services if you're talking water and sewer too.
I, I, I don't think you, I don't think you'd be able to do it either.
But you certainly can't do it at one point seven five percent.
No, I said one point seven five for the taxes.
So you're saying, but the overall fees would, the total tax and fees would be way above two percent.
Way probably, go above the two percent, yeah. Your stormwater would go above two percent, but.
Well, but again, our town doesn't mind spending the money. It's just like when people used to pay full, full day kindergarten and they said, well, you know, half day was free and everyone said, oh, of course we should pay for full-time kindergarten. When we looked at building a DPW on a section of the town that was basically building ready, it would have been fairly reasonable, people in the town voted to go with a more expensive option of building it at the tennis club. And, and now we're facing decisions, we're going to have a forum about the middle schools and are people, again, going to choose the most expensive option? You know, are we going to choose to have two middle schools again? You know, the town is directing a lot of these pressures. We make decisions as if there's no end to, you know, we could just spend money on whatever thinks like a good idea, but it does put a lot of pressure on us. I mean, and residents have to be behind this. I mean, you know, Mark, I appreciate your, your efforts, but if, if people in the rest, in the town don't support decisions that are going to save us money, then the prices are just going to go up.
I think I'm supporting what you say, Tom. I mean, my argument was we, we can't afford to cut services substantially. We need to maintain, you know, that's what I'm saying, a level service budget. But I was a little bit miffed last year when we started out by us saying, yeah, we're only raising taxes two percent, only to find out we, but, but we made up for it by raising fees. So it was really just a, a tax cap issue, not a true savings to residents. And if we're going to continue to do that, I've got no problem doing it. Let's just say we're going to do that and not say, hey, everybody, we're only raising your taxes two percent when in fact the bills everybody gets shows that it's going up more. I, I think people put more, and I agree with you, people put more importance on maintaining the services that they've come to expect in this town than they have in another fifty or seventy-five dollars. I just do want to go back to a discussion we had two hours ago that said the difference between, I think, Paul, you said the difference between one point seven five percent and two percent was what, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
A hundred and twenty-five.
A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but on the other hand, we had a proposal to take away a potential five hundred thousand dollars from a developer who wants to move five hundred thousand dollars out of, out of an obligation. So keep all this stuff in mind, that five hundred thousand dollars is real money, but more importantly, I think this is. So Tom, I, I agree with you. I think people are more interested in maintaining the services and the quality of life that, that they have, but we have to be conscious that we don't, you know, run ourselves, tax ourselves out of.
Now, trying to build a budget sends me mixed messages. Which is number one? Is it level service? Is it level service? Or is it your, your, your tax goals? Because, you know, that is, they're, they're not one of the same. They're going in opposite, potentially, they go in opposite directions.
Yeah, so we need to actually do some votes for him, rather than just, because what's happened in the past is we've always had this argument, and then we never make a decision. And then you come out with something, we go, oh! And I would say, what did you do? Well, because we've never voted. So I think we have to make a commitment. So instead of going down, decreasing to, decreasing the increase, only increase, let's go with the finance committee, one point eight four. Is there a motion for that?
Well, is it one point eight four or is it level service?
Oh, I would say we gotta start decreasing the taxes.
Okay, well, have the vote.
So that's, I'm asking, is anyone willing to put that motion on the floor?
I'll put the motion on the floor.
Is there a second to the one point eight four?
You can second if you want.
I can second it, I thought you were gonna go to one point seven five.
Well-
The thought was, it was a compromise between one point seven five and two, and the finance committee recommended that.
Oh, okay, good, then yes.
But is, is this so, I mean, what's the motion? To increase the tax rate?
To set the tax rate.
To de- decrease, to the increase, instead of going up to two and a half percent, we're going up to one point eight four.
But I'll ask the same question Paul just asked us. Is that on equal value property? Or is that the bottom line budget?
What was the recommendation, Paul?
Recommendation, my recommendation?
Of the finance committee.
The finance committee was one, I, I wanna find, it was one point eight four.
But it was, he said, the, the specific, the script or-
What I want to find, if it's the bottom line or if it's the increase. And I just can't, I don't know exactly where it is in the-
Hold on, I got it here.
Just so we all are on the same page, would you like to find it, that's all.
Here it is, I got it, hold on. It says, looking forward to another productive and collaborative year with you. Purposes letters that pro, our primary goal is to postpone for as long as possible hitting the cast cap, that if the town were to raise the prior year's levy to the maximum permitted increase allowed by two and a half, we'd reach our cap in fiscal twenty twenty-four. So therefore, the, we are, in order to avoid hitting the cap levy in the next ten years, the maximum amount we can increase the tax levy limit is an average of one point eight four percent annually over the next ten years.
So that is taxes excluding the debt exclusion.
Yes.
So if we have a large influx of new growth, it would mean a higher amount that we do not raise taxes on, because it's the, it's the, it's the line of, it's the line of last year's levy limit, plus the two and a half, plus new growth is the levy limit, is the levy limit that we're talking, that they're talking about.
So we're, we're proposing to increase the levy limit one point eight four percent?
That's what they're proposing.
That's what they're proposing.
And what is your recommendation?
My recommendation personally would be go with level service.
But you go to level service, then, but that's always, level service, we never, I mean, level service, you're going up to two and a half percent.
No, no, because we can move things into enterprise funds.
And then the other thing is, is you wanna give us some guidance as to what you wanna cut? If you're gonna go with one point eight four, and it doesn't work out with level service, where do you wanna start trimming?
Can you offset the OPEB contribution?
Sure.
Yeah, 'cause the other thing is, I said, we bring the OPEB down to five hundred. Right now, we're putting in how much per year?
Um, I believe the amount that is in my proposal is like seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
So I was saying, we put it at one point eight four. We bring the OPEB to a flat rate of five hundred. And we create a policy of paying in a little more destabilization. And we increase storm water fees.
My proposal on storm water fees is going up from thirty-five percent. It's covering, it's currently covering the FY twenty budget, thirty-five percent. Fees are covering thirty-five percent of the budget. My proposal is go to forty-two point five.
Okay, to bring the storm waters to forty-two point five.
Percent of the budget. And I hope that the budget doesn't increase all that much. Because that'll really bring it out of whack. But that, that would be about a seventy thousand dollar increase that would go to fees.
How's that package sound to people?
I'm, I'm not really, I mean, I, because I don't know the impact, Marie, necessarily, of this and money. I mean, I, I-
Well, these are directives, they're not, we're not putting, he always comes back and says, this is what he was capable of doing.
Right, I mean, I like the seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand in OPEB going back to five hundred thousand dollars. Because I think we're over, but, but what does two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars do? I mean, that's, that, that may keep the level service budget.
Well, it allows us to offset, to lower the increase, right?
But, but the point is, that if we do that, we may not need to lower the increase to one point eight, eight-four percent. And again, lowering the increase to one point eight-four percent, that itself, eh, if, if all we're gonna do is shift seven point five percent more in storm water, Marie, okay? It seems to me that lowering that mo, that tax rate to one point eight four percent is going to be a, a service reduction in something.
We don't know that, he's gotta do the numbers now. The only thing we're doing is we're giving him targets to aim for.
But we oughta give him the, the prioritized list. So do this first, do this second, do this third. And, and, and each case, see what, what's impacted along the way. And if in fact, you know, we can get with an OPEB cut and a, and a seven and a half percent shift in storm water utility, we, we can still get what we need. And oh, by the way, here's the result and what it does for the tax rate, why then further cut the tax rate? Just to say we did it?
Well, I think the-
And then, and put that on result and cut services, because we're not gonna shift-
We don't know that yet. Let him start playing with the numbers and come back to us. What we're supposed to do is give him directives to see what he's going to aim for. And then he comes back, and is that correct?
But I can't play with these numbers, because I don't have, this would require me to have numbers from the departments.
Right.
Before I, I can, I can say what this is really going to do. I mean, I can cut OPEB by, you know, down to the five hundred thousand. You know, when you say more operational stabilization fund, I have zero going in there now. I've already put the forty-two point five percent in for storm water. And the tax levy I have at one point seven five. You know, the difference, you know, the number that I have, it was a six hundred thousand dollar amount in the hole. It, it would go down to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But every year in October, we are literally at six hundred thousand in the hole.
Absolutely.
Every year.
Absolutely, I don't disagree with that.
So it's not as if we're giving him an impossible ask by going to one point eight four. In fact, he's even booking that at one point seven five. So, yeah.
Well, I think we have to respect the, the finance committee's goal to, to sort of keep the, the wall, hitting the wall further back. You know, I think that that's a reasonable request from them. And, but the other side is, with this new building going up, eh, next to the Medical Arch Building, I mean, they could end up paying taxes.
They, they wouldn't be paying taxes, but it probably will not be in FY twenty-one.
No, not until twenty-two or something.
It's gonna be sometime later, I mean, I don't even know if they have a shovel in the ground yet. So it-
Well, they've done a lot of preliminary work, we know that.
Okay, I mean, there may be something, but it's hardly going to have any impact, I would, I would suggest.
We can't bank on that, but-
I, not for FY twenty-one.
But twenty-two, yeah.
Well, I, I'll reiterate my comment about dying a thousand deaths of strangulation with a one point eight four. I'd much rather do a level, level service budget. And, and again, I, I, to some degree, I applaud the finance committee. And to some degree, they're way beyond their, their jurisdiction here.
I wanted to go one point seven five.
I, I understand that, all I'm saying is that-
By going one point eight four.
All I'm saying is that, that I, I, I think we, we should have a directive of, of, of a balanced certain, level service budget with a to, two percent total increase. And, and, and not worry about the, you know, the others. Paul, what, if, if, if seven, if the storm water utility increase is seventy thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
Seventy thousand dollars represents then ten, ten percent of tax, or twelve percent, fifteen percent of tax revenue? Something like that?
Seventy thousand dollars of tax revenue?
Not, not seventy, one point five percent or-
Um, it probably represents point one five. Because point two five is, um, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So you could say-
So sixty thousand dollars is, you know, point one two. And so it's like point one five, okay, sounds right. So, so the point eight four is, with seventy thousand dollar shift, is equivalent to a one point nine, equivalent to a two percent. One point eight five, one point eight four plus point one five is two percent.
Yeah.
For what we're doing.
So basically, what we're saying at one point eight four-
It's the same as we did last year.
Forty-two point five on storm water utilities. You're satisfied with that?
Yeah, one's gonna offset the other.
Okay, so, eh, so I'm putting a motion on for a one point eight four.
There's already a motion, I think.
With adding, with that, the storm water utility's at four, forty-two point five. And the directive of OPEB flat rate of five hundred with a new policy of paying into the stabilization, operational stabilization fund.
At what rate?
Um, you tell me what you could do to start the policy off.
I, I suppose I gotta crunch the other numbers first, I don't think it's gonna be much.
Yeah, so you, you come back to, so we're just giving you directives or aiming towards something.
And the one point eight four is of the tax levy and not of the increase in prop two and a half. It's of the tax levy.
Which is better?
For me?
Yeah.
It would be one point eight four of the two and a half percent increase would be better.
Well, that's what I was aiming towards.
Okay. That's not what, that's not what the finance committee is saying.
They wanna go to one point eight four of-
Of the tax levy.
Because, because, and, and after you deduct new growth on, on equal properties, it's probably a lot less than one point eight four percent.
Yeah, I, yeah, maybe it could very well be, if we have a very good year. I mean, I'm estimating a hundred and fifty thousand in new growth, so-
So that's another quarter percent.
Anything above that is, is gonna add to the amount that's unused, so.
Now, every year when we're bringing this down, we've been bringing it down on the increase.
We've been bringing it down on the increase only.
That's what we've been doing. And they're asking us to put it on the-
They're asking you to put it on the levy limit. I don't say it's the total taxes, but the total taxes before debt exclusions.
Right, mm-hmm. So how do people feel? Do they wanna go on the increase? Or do they wanna take the one point eight four on the total tax levy?
Well, I know, last year, we did it on the increase. And it, and we made, you know, we, level budget, you know, we, we were able to get things together. And, and, um, so I, I, the other one, sounds like we could be in some territory that is gonna really change things. Hmm, go ahead, it's all yours. Have fun.
I, I mean, my, my inclination is to follow the finance committee's recommendation. But it sounds like, I, I thought they were saying one point eight four percent of the two and a half increase. Which they're not, right, Paul?
They are not, we made clear that with use of terminology, part of the discussion.
And how much money are we talking? What's the difference between the two?
Whatever new growth is, we don't know.
I, I, I don't know, it's not in my head. Calculate that, baby.
You finally let us down, you probably have to have six calculators to get this.
Yeah, I, I, I mean-
No, don't, you don't, you just don't have it, it's all right.
And the question we have is, when it comes down to it-
Only other question again, at some point, but-
Push the envelope on service cuts.
Yeah.
How are we gonna make that, who's gonna make that decision? Obviously, we're gonna tell the town manager, you make the first recommendation on service cuts.
Yeah.
Right.
And we're gonna have that be done by an interim town manager or somebody who's been here for a total of some months.
Well, yeah, but also, eh, we have that survey. That was the purpose, that Stephen did the survey. And the survey starts, told us where we were supposed to start moving things down. And which departments we're gonna go first, so.
I, you know, it's, it's very easy to tell which departments are gonna be first. And the last time that this happened, you will have every lobbying group sitting in that, those chairs, lobbying for their specifics.
Yeah.
And there will be two unknown departments that are left on the bottom. And that will be the DPW and the finance department.
Who have no, who have no constituency.
We have no friends.
We like you, Paul.
And the interim town manager becomes a hatchet man. And then he'll never, he'll get another interim town manager job because of all the bad press, so we're setting him up.
But even more importantly is, you know, we have an open town meeting form of government. And we saw last year what happened. And somebody just stood up and said, I wanna give another eighty-five thousand dollars to the fire department. And, and that's what's gonna happen. And, and oh, by the way, it passed that without any source of revenue. You know, and they, they, we literally passed an unbalanced budget at the town meeting. And so we, we're just opening ourselves to doing that, because, you know, I, I just suspect that's gonna happen when we start making service cuts. Because we know that any constituency can put a hundred and fifty people in the town meeting, change the budget, and now we're, we're back to a mess. We're better off really dealing with it here.
Well, again, no, we, usually, the way the process works, we start with directives. You come in in October to the two committees, or three committees, and tell us, we're six to eight hundred thousand dollars in the hole. Then you and Tom do your magic. And then you come back to us and you say, okay, these are our problems. And then we decide where we need to make the cuts.
Again, my estimates are conservative. I make that statement clear and upfront. And there's usually something that happens, whether it's more state aid recently that has come in. I, I pumped up the state aid from a two percent increase to a four percent increase. You know, whether it's less amount into the retirement system, instead of the eight percent that we've estimated, or seven and a half, it's only five. We, we get a break somewhere usually down the road that makes the big difference.
But, but your numbers with that six hundred thousand dollar mismatch aren't based on one point eight, eight-four percent increase, they're based on a two percent increase.
No, they're based on one point seven five.
Of the two and a half, not the levy limit, though.
So I say we go to one point eight for the levy limit, not the levy limit of the two percent increase. That we go to storm water fees at four, four two, four two point five, like you recommended. That you balance, eh, you make recommended changes to OPEB and the stabilization policies. And come back to us on that.
And, and the other thing that's also in there, again, the OPEB policy, according to your policy, would go up a quarter of a percent every year. So for FY twenty-one, I have it estimated going up a quarter of a percent. Also note that your, your, the amount that is estimated to go towards capital is going up a quarter of a percent.
Yeah, so I'm not touching that without Richard here, so we'll stick to open.
I'm saying that those are going up. And, you know, they, they, you know, it's another hundred and thirty thousand dollars, just that quarter percent for capital, and it's somewhere around there for OPEB also. But the OPEB, we could drop to five hundred. Again, that's two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars right off the top.
So, so Marie, can I, one more pitch here?
Okay.
One point eight four percent has now become a, a, an illogical number. If you're not gonna accept those finance committee's basis, then the number ought to be something, just make it one point eight five percent. And, and so we can say we're cutting it down another point, you know, fifteen basis points from the-
Okay, how about one point eight, one point eight?
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, one, you know, we're, we're sitting here dealing with people's jobs and people's services and things like that.
We don't know that.
But we don't know that, but we're direct, when, when, the difference between one point eight, one point eight five and two percent is real money, that's all I'm saying. And, and, you know, what we oughta do is say to Paul, minimal, you know, target for whatever, minimize something or-
That's all we're doing, is we're giving him directives or targets. He's gonna come back and tell us what he was able to do. That's all, all we're doing now. We're not, we're not, there's no, we've never held their feet to the fire. They came back and tell us, well, we, we promised level service, but we, with these things, this is what we're gonna have to cut. So this is the beginning of the discussion, he's just looking at the directive, so.
Yeah, we could be pleasantly surprised. Paul could come back and say, oh, we can drop this more.
Yeah.
But, so you can do it two ways. One is to say, come back with a, a budget of one point eight percent and, and tell us what got cut, and we'll maybe add it back. Or you can say, with, come, go in with a budget of two percent and tell us the first five things you'd cut to get us down to one point eight percent.
Well, let's start with the aim at one point eight. I don't care if it's one eight, point eight four. And, eh, work with the OPEB policy, create a new stabilization policy, and we accept the storm water fee at forty-two five. But you can come back if you wanna change that, too.
We, we could see where the numbers play out to. You know, as far as the cuts, you know, I certainly have to wait till a town manager comes in. There's gonna be his budget that's gonna be proposed, so, and I can't make that recommendation. And again, you know, there might be other changes in departments. And I can't make that recommendation. And again, you know, there might be other changes in departments.
Marie? I, I just, I like the idea of, you know, we went from two-and-a-half to two percent, and now we go from two percent to one-point-four. But we're, we shouldn't be, I don't think we should be bouncing around. I think we should go, you know, we try to make these reductions and stick with them. And, um, you know, we were able to do that last time, and it wasn't easy, I think, you know, to, to do it at two percent. But, you know, I, I just, I think, I, I wouldn't want it to go to one-point-eight and then have to bounce back up.
Okay, so one-point-eight-four?
That's, that's on the table. That's the motion.
I'm kinda, I kinda feel like, like Mark, I feel like we should, we should go down to one-point-seven-five. That we should put the original proposal, just 'cause the one-eight-four isn't applicable to the apples and oranges.
Okay.
You know?
So one-point-seven-five-
I think-
Yeah, what's, are you gonna withdraw the motion for the one-point-eight-four, or do you want us to vote on that?
Withdraw the motion, start over, I think.
Okay, so is there-
It was, it was Marie ultimately made the motion.
No, I didn't. I think-
I thought you made it.
I started it, yeah.
And then you seconded it. So you have to withdraw the motion.
Yeah, withdrawing my motion that we, uh, increase the, uh, tax rate out to, uh, one-point-eight-four percent of the two-and-a-half percent.
Is there one for eight, one-point-seven-five for the increase?
I, I, depends how it's worded.
Well, how do you want it worded?
Well, I, I don't wanna word it at all, but, cause I don't, I don't support it. But I think it's a, you know, ask, ask the town manager and, and finance director to prepare an initial budget that's based on reducing OPEB to-
Five-hundred thousand.
Five-hundred thousand dollars, increasing the stormwater utility percentage of the, the stormwater utility percentage of the stormwater budget from thirty-five percent to forty-two-and-a-half percent. And, and, and increase the, the general property taxes on an equal property basis by only one-point-seven-five percent.
And work on a policy first.
That's a sole, separate thing. That's a policy. That's not-
You don't have to weigh it up to where about that?
That's not a budget, Marie. That's a policy.
Alright, so I'll bring the policy up for the next time, so.
I mean, if that's what people wanna do, then, then it's to develop-
Is there a second?
To develop a budget. I'm not, I, no, I'm not making that motion.
Okay, I make the motion that he said, and it'll be my motion. Is there a second to my motion? Okay, any further discussion, Paul?
I just wanna be clear, one-point-seven-five?
Of the increase.
Of the increase.
Oh, my, yes.
Increase of the two-point-five.
Yeah. Any concerns or problems?
But it was to develop a budget based upon-
Yes.
Those targets.
These are targets.
With also a sub-goal of level service.
Yes, yes. With this, I, I meant mine to say with the sub-goal, with a goal of level service, okay, to-
Okay, I'm gonna, to, to, to direct the town manager and finance director, CFO, to develop a budget based upon, one, lowering our OPEB contribution from seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars to five-hundred thousand dollars. Or I just should say, based on an OPEB contribution of so, five-hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Increasing the stormwater utility percentage of paying stormwater costs from thirty-five percent of the overall department budget to forty-two-and-a-half percent of the overall department budget. And, and utilize one-point-seven-five percent of the total available two-and-a-half percent tax increase and to inform us of a list of things that, of, of any service charges, any service changes that result from meeting this directive.
No, we said with the sub-goal-
Well, it's a goal.
Of a level service.
Sub, sub, sub-goal of a level service, but also to inform us of any service changes that take place as a result of meeting those goals.
So moved. Did you get that, thank you. And-
Seconded.
Seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
I'll vote for that one.
It's a miracle.
I mean, the reality is, it's almost what you have with the exception of the OPEB.
Okay.
We had to work through it.
Yes.
I understand.
And we gave you legal room now.
You did?
With the OPEB.
No, no more discussion. I understand what you want.
Now, the other thing that we got a little, um, nervous about last year was the use of the casino money. And if you could keep us informed on where the casino money is falling this year in the way of uses.
We will, um, we'll keep it in the narratives.
Okay.
Unless we specifically wanna vote it, but, um-
Marie, I, in the note I sent you, is what I wrote. I believe casino mitigation funds should be considered general revenue, but because they're not recurring, because they're gonna last, they're gonna disappear in eighteen years. They should be directed to capital, mainly roads and, and infrastructure use. This should almost be earmarked to the point where we set direction so that when casino mitigation funds stop, you know, the impact will be on our capital budget.
Yeah, and I think one of the things we should consider is using it for design money, 'cause we're coming up to all those extra costs. I think they were saying the second half of Converse Street was gonna be five-point-two and-
We still have design money from the original eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that they gave us.
We do?
Capital's capital. This is just general revenue.
All right, anything else you want to on the budget? One of the things I mentioned is I know we had talked about regionalizing the veteran service. And that will affect the budget if we could keep that in mind of-
Leena is all for it. Um, you know, if, if she had, uh, if, if this board is serious, I mean, I can tell her to, to get going on it. She wanted to get going on it, um, but didn't know if she was just spinning her wheels or not. So if this board is in favor of that, um, I will mention to her that this board would be in favor of it. And, you know, the problem is, Esau Meadow is the prime candidate, but unfortunately, they're going through a transition with town managers, too. So it's, it's not the best timing to get it done at this point in time, but you can have her keep on working on it.
Well, does, is there a, uh, support on the board to go with the regionalization?
Yeah. Well, certainly explore. I don't know, you know, I, I mean, it-
Right, she, that's all she's doing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Anything else we want the budget to consider?
Let me look at my list here.
Well, we, you know, we did have a resident come in and speak during the public forum and about trying to improve the use of technology to inform residents and improving our web presence.
Yep.
And I don't know, I looked at the list and it really doesn't specify like, yeah.
Well, I think that, um, the major goal's up there, but the budget goals, I think you're right. I'm having the IT-
Yeah.
Director come in to talk about cybersecurity and probably the second, um, meeting in October.
He was just here talking about it. You weren't, you weren't here that year, week.
But I've been here all summer.
No, no, when I was chair-
Oh, when you were chair, yeah. I'm asking him to come back in, 'cause there's a new state program.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he's coming in the, uh, second weekend in October, probably. And so you might want to say we're open to any increases that might be required with the new programs coming out. Because I attended that cybersecurity, uh, program out in Boston. And they've got a new, like, czar woman who's in charge of all this, uh, the, the governors developed this program. And the, one of the pilot programs is coming out of Bay Path. And there's gonna be money coming available to help us secure not just our election, um, software, but just the municipal software in town because of all the problems occurring. So, yeah, that'd be something we all consider, Paul. And so if we'll have that by the sixth, the end of October, we'll have a better idea of what costs might be.
Marie, not, I mean, we have, I know you're talking about budget, but the non-budget goals part of it. I, I'm becoming concerned that we're taking on more than a new town manager who's also coming onto, coming up to speed will be able to truly handle, given the fact that we have a DPW under construction that's nothing but concerns. Got an adult center under construction. We're, we've got a, a timeline, deadline to purchase and install new streetlights based on funding availability. And before we start picking up any more new initiatives, I'd like to make sure we really have those under, under control and that a new town manager, and as Jay Moynihan's found, that it, it's gonna take some time to come up to speed on, 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 I think, those three projects. Not saying we can't do other things, and I think that right after the first of the year, we'll be in better shape with all of them. But I don't think that at this point, we ought to be taking on any of the new, and, and a substantial amount of new initiatives that require our town manager to lead the charge.
And I, and I think another factor is gonna be, who's the chair of this select one? And how much time are they gonna be spending with the town manager when he needs to spend time learning the ropes? Yeah, so we need to think about that, too.
Well, we don't even know, you know, I mean, we're talking theoretically, but, you know, we could select a town manager candidate who says, "I'm not available till January first."
Yeah.
I mean, we don't know that, and we're doing interviews in September, but, so, you know, which is great if Jay, Jay will stay. But it's also an, an issue starting January first with somebody new coming up to speed.
Well, I think that there's two things with goals. One is project goals, and the other is looking at just general goals for the community. I think Jay was talking about a long process where we look at, where do we think Long Meadow's gonna be in thirty years? And then we, we, so that the top half of the goal sheet is just, these are, these aren't project goals. These are just basic fifty-thousand-feet above. When you talk about actual project goals, I think you're right. We, there's nothing else we can put on their plate. I, I made that list. DPW, adult center, capping landfill, streetlight purchase, Wolf Swamp Field renovations, uh, everything that's going on with Columbia Gas that will be coming up this year and, um, the asbestos issue. So there's, there's not more we can, that's too much for anyone's plate already. But I think we could still start working at larger, um, prospective goals. But it's not something we have to decide now. But if there's any other project goals that we're missing, that, something we're supposed to be working on?
What's that list again? You just said DPW?
DPW construction, adult center construction, as you said, no further cost overruns or, and have them on time. Complete the capping of the landfill according to DEP requirements. Finish the streetlight purchase and LED replacement project. Um, complete the Wolf Swamp Field renovations. Work with, uh, TGP and Columbia Gas to ensure the safety and best practices are top priority of any work done in the town by any utilities. Recover costs of, um, the, uh, removal and disposal of asbestos material. I mean, is there any other things that are going on in town that town manager has to prioritize?
Oh, you have to watch, do you see the Council on Aging?
Yeah.
Maybe that project is there. No, there's certainly the big ones.
What, what is the status of the Wolf Swamp Field renovation? I know there's a meeting, I-
I think there's a meeting-
Uh, next Monday.
Next Monday. Um, with the-
With the Long Meadow Baseball Association and Long Meadow Little League. With the thought that was, uh, thought of, the amendment at the town meeting was to add in one additional baseball field because there was a lack of fields. Um, and the thought was to get those two organizations together to see what fields that we have that we might be able to get in playing shape, um, instead of going through this kind of reorganization of the Wolf Swamp Fields renovation plan.
Provided they agree. Well, it doesn't matter if they agree. It's gotta go back to town meeting. I mean, that's the prime.
And we have that coming up, so we, they have until October, well, we have till the twenty-first. As a select board, we can do anything we want, frankly. So if anyone could think of any projects, I forgot, considering it's so overwhelming. The, um, but I still think we have to start looking at maybe bigger goals, maybe, um, the structure of what we have now. Maybe we have to be looking at a town planner. Maybe we need to hire someone extra to start helping getting these projects done. Uh, because this isn't a lot on anyone's plate. It's-
So Marie, one of the concerns I have is, 'cause I, is, you know, making sure the goals are, you know, smart, goals, specific, measurable, attainable, timely, and, and relevant. And, and, you know, to say we'd like to, you know, have a community that, that embraces everybody, that's really great. But until you get down to what does that mean and what are you gonna do about it, that's just kind of a, a, a thought process.
But if you don't have the thought, lofty goals, you never reach to that.
But, but you need to get, you need to have some goal behind that's achieving that. And, and when you do that, all of a sudden, it gets down to somebody's gotta do something. You know, I, I mean, I have no problem with saying, you know, that we wanna help, help seniors age healthy in place, which is one of the things here. I think it's a great, great goal, but that means, you know, Jim Layland, you've gotta do something down at the adult center or, or Beverly Hirschhorn, or whoever it is, has to do something to start working on that. That, 'cause to have a, a goal like that without any actions toward achieving the goal is just, pardon me, lip service, so.
Well, let's, let's wait till Jay comes back. I think we did great. We got the directives done today. And we're starting the project goals. We can look at the bigger goals and see how they fit in and what we're gonna do with it next. I think we've been at it for three and a half hours. Anything else you wanna talk about on the subcommittees?
Well, just the Pioneer Valley, you know, Plan and Commission, um, as I said, Andy was there. And, and he really did encourage us to, uh, put something in for a grant, but it doesn't look like that's gonna happen.
South end of, okay.
Yeah, for the south, you know, he said we should get that going, just to get it in the, in the hopper, so to get it along.
Did you see anything about bike trails? Did they talk about grants? 'Cause I heard there was a grant coming up for February.
Yeah, um, they did talk about the bike trails and it didn't, um, I think there's, it seems like there's a lot of work, a lot of groundwork needs to be done before we can apply for anything. Because we can't, you know, like, looking at how we connect to other communities. Uh, but it would be interesting, I mean, as I thought about it, it would be great if we could work with Connecticut and get a bike trail like from Washington, you know, Washington, down through Connecticut to the malls, so people could-
Well, every other town is connected, and we are like a big gaping hole. So if you wanna look into it, that would be great.
You really need, 'cause we applied in Agawam last year, and you really need kind of a plan, like a coherent plan. You can say, "Look, we've already, you know, invested, uh, in our town, so this is what we want. Now, can you help us fund it?" There's, there's, there's money for planning, but they wanna know like how wide the trails are, whether they're eighty-eight accessible, you know, where, how many people they're going to serve, which ridership, all kinds of different stuff.
But they have money for planning?
Yeah.
Oh, so maybe we should apply for planning money.
Yeah.
I think we got some money for planning.
Bike trails?
I think of bike trail. Um, yes, Andy said we had gotten some money. But, um, you know, the other thing with, is that we have some, um, you know, when you look at, before you get all the bike trails, you also wanna have places for people to put their bikes. And, and he was saying that, that out of Bliss Park, they took some bike racks, and we may wanna find ways to relocate those. I mean, the library has just this thing about as wide as this table, uh, you could probably just put a handful of bikes there. Recently, a bike was stolen from the library, so we should have more bike racks at the library. We should have more bike racks at, uh, the shops. And if we have some bike racks already, we can do that, but we probably could get some funding for something like that, too.
The problem with bike racks is, Tom, they have to come out of somebody's operating budget because they're not capital. And so, you know, the, the issue is, what department's gonna allocate some of their department mu, I mean-
Yeah.
And, and so it's, it's a lobbying effort with those departments. That's, you know, bike racks have no natural constituency, you know?
Maybe they do.
I mean, if they, they cost ten thousand dollars, it'd be great. We put them into the capital budget, but-
We could approach the, um, the owner of the shops and say, you know, 'cause they're not that expensive, you know, relatively speaking.
Yeah.
So if you could find out, uh, through Mario, where the, um, grant, was there planning money that we received for bike trails?
Okay. All right.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you very much for joining us. October seventh is our next meeting. Oh, but don't forget our public forum on September twenty-fifth at seven o'clock. Thank you.